Litter whenever you see it.
Every litter bit counts.
The key pollution beautiful.
Sun Splash Park, Daytona. Incident occurred on the sand.
Tower 221, life pressure water responding outside.
840 central, inbound drowning and have fire roll close to it at the time.
223 special copy of water rescue. University approaching Daytona Beach, we got one guard in the water at the four.
We are not ordinary people, we know this. We run into the chaos and everybody else is running away.
Volusia County is a beautiful place to live, but if we don't respect it, who will?
Litter is a problem, one that we can solve.
But it's going to take all of us working together.
What matters is that we all do our part.
Don't be a litter bug.
And pick up litter whenever you see it.
Every litter bit counts.
The key pollution beautiful.
Sun Splash Park, Daytona. Incident occurred on the sand.
Tower 221, life pressure water responding outside.
840 central, inbound drowning and have fire roll close to it at the time.
223 special copy of water rescue. University approaching Daytona Beach, we got one guard in the water at the four.
We are not ordinary people, we know this. We run into the chaos and everybody else is running away.
Volusia County is a beautiful place to live, but if we don't respect it, who will?
Litter is a problem, one that we can solve.
But it's going to take all of us working together.
What matters is that we all do our part.
Don't be a litter bug.
And pick up litter whenever you see it.
Every litter bit counts.
The key pollution beautiful.
Sun Splash Park, Daytona. Incident occurred on the sand.
Tower 221, life pressure water responding outside.
840 central, inbound drowning and have fire roll close to it at the time.
223 special copy of water rescue. University approaching Daytona Beach, we got one guard in the water at the four.
We are not ordinary people, we know this. We run into the chaos and everybody else is running away.
Volusia County is a beautiful place to live, but if we don't respect it, who will?
Litter is a problem, one that we can solve.
But it's going to take all of us working together.
What matters is that we all do our part.
Don't be a litter bug.
And pick up litter whenever you see it.
Every litter bit counts.
The key pollution beautiful.
Sun Splash Park, Daytona. Incident occurred on the sand.
Tower 221, life pressure water responding outside.
840 central, inbound drowning and have fire roll close to it at the time.
223 special copy of water rescue. University approaching Daytona Beach, we got one guard in the water at the four.
We are not ordinary people, we know this. We run into the chaos and everybody else is running away.
Volusia County is a beautiful place to live, but if we don't respect it, who will?
Litter is a problem, one that we can solve.
But it's going to take all of us working together.
What matters is that we all do our part.
Don't be a litter bug.
And pick up litter whenever you see it.
Every litter bit counts.
The key pollution beautiful.
Sun Splash Park, Daytona. Incident occurred on the sand.
Tower 221, life pressure water responding outside.
840 central, inbound drowning and have fire roll close to it at the time.
223 special copy of water rescue. University approaching Daytona Beach, we got one guard in the water at the four.
We are not ordinary people, we know this. We run into the chaos and everybody else is running away.
Volusia County is a beautiful place to live, but if we don't respect it, who will?
Litter is a problem, one that we can solve.
But it's going to take all of us working together.
What matters is that we all do our part.
Don't be a litter bug.
And pick up litter whenever you see it.
Every litter bit counts.
The key pollution beautiful.
Sun Splash Park, Daytona. Incident occurred on the sand.
Tower 221, life pressure water responding outside.
840 central, inbound drowning and have fire roll close to it at the time.
223 special copy of water rescue. University approaching Daytona Beach, we got one guard in the water at the four.
We are not ordinary people, we know this. We run into the chaos and everybody else is running away.
Volusia County is a beautiful place to live, but if we don't respect it, who will?
Litter is a problem, one that we can solve.
But it's going to take all of us working together.
What matters is that we all do our part.
Don't be a litter bug.
And pick up litter whenever you see it.
Every litter bit counts.
The key pollution beautiful.
Sun Splash Park, Daytona. Incident occurred on the sand.
Tower 221, life pressure water responding outside.
840 central, inbound drowning and have fire roll close to it at the time.
223 special copy of water rescue. University approaching Daytona Beach, we got one guard in the water at the four.
We are not ordinary people, we know this. We run into the chaos and everybody else is running away.
Volusia County is a beautiful place to live, but if we don't respect it, who will?
Litter is a problem, one that we can solve.
But it's going to take all of us working together.
What matters is that we all do our part.
Don't be a litter bug.
And pick up litter whenever you see it.
Every litter bit counts.
The key pollution beautiful.
Sun Splash Park, Daytona. Incident occurred on the sand.
Tower 221, life pressure water responding outside.
840 central, inbound drowning and have fire roll close to it at the time.
223 special copy of water rescue. University approaching Daytona Beach, we got one guard in the water at the four.
We are not ordinary people, we know this. We run into the chaos and everybody else is running away.
Volusia County is a beautiful place to live, but if we don't respect it, who will?
Litter is a problem, one that we can solve.
But it's going to take all of us working together.
What matters is that we all do our part.
Don't be a litter bug.
And pick up litter whenever you see it.
Every litter bit counts.
The key pollution beautiful.
Sun Splash Park, Daytona. Incident occurred on the sand.
Tower 221, life pressure water responding outside.
840 central, inbound drowning and have fire roll close to it at the time.
223 special copy of water rescue. University approaching Daytona Beach, we got one guard in the water at the four.
We are not ordinary people, we know this. We run into the chaos and everybody else is running away.
Volusia County is a beautiful place to live, but if we don't respect it, who will?
Litter is a problem, one that we can solve.
But it's going to take all of us working together.
What matters is that we all do our part.
Don't be a litter bug.
And pick up litter whenever you see it.
Every litter bit counts.
The key pollution beautiful.
Sun Splash Park, Daytona. Incident occurred on the sand.
Tower 221, life pressure water responding outside.
840 central, inbound drowning and have fire roll close to it at the time.
223 special copy of water rescue. University approaching Daytona Beach, we got one guard in the water at the four.
We are not ordinary people, we know this. We run into the chaos and everybody else is running away.
Volusia County is a beautiful place to live, but if we don't respect it, who will?
Litter is a problem, one that we can solve.
But it's going to take all of us working together.
What matters is that we all do our part.
Don't be a litter bug.
And pick up litter whenever you see it.
Every litter bit counts.
The key pollution beautiful.
Sun Splash Park, Daytona. Incident occurred on the sand.
Tower 221, life pressure water responding outside.
840 central, inbound drowning and have fire roll close to it at the time.
223 special copy of water rescue. University approaching Daytona Beach, we got one guard in the water at the four.
We are not ordinary people, we know this. We run into the chaos and everybody else is running away.
Volusia County is a beautiful place to live, but if we don't respect it, who will?
Litter is a problem, one that we can solve.
But it's going to take all of us working together.
What matters is that we all do our part.
Don't be a litter bug.
And pick up litter whenever you see it.
Every litter bit counts.
The key pollution beautiful.
Sun Splash Park, Daytona. Incident occurred on the sand.
Tower 221, life pressure water responding outside.
840 central, inbound drowning and have fire roll close to it at the time.
223 special copy of water rescue. University approaching Daytona Beach, we got one guard in the water at the four.
We are not ordinary people, we know this. We run into the chaos and everybody else is running away.
Volusia County is a beautiful place to live, but if we don't respect it, who will?
Litter is a problem, one that we can solve.
But it's going to take all of us working together.
What matters is that we all do our part.
Don't be a litter bug.
And pick up litter whenever you see it.
Every litter bit counts.
The key pollution beautiful.
Sun Splash Park, Daytona. Incident occurred on the sand.
Tower 221, life pressure water responding outside.
840 central, inbound drowning and have fire roll close to it at the time.
223 special copy of water rescue. University approaching Daytona Beach, we got one guard in the water at the four.
We are not ordinary people, we know this. We run into the chaos and everybody else is running away.
Volusia County is a beautiful place to live, but if we don't respect it, who will?
Litter is a problem, one that we can solve.
But it's going to take all of us working together.
What matters is that we all do our part.
Don't be a litter bug.
And pick up litter whenever you see it.
Every litter bit counts.
The key pollution beautiful.
Sun Splash Park, Daytona. Incident occurred on the sand.
Tower 221, life pressure water responding outside.
840 central, inbound drowning and have fire roll close to it at the time.
223 special copy of water rescue. University approaching Daytona Beach, we got one guard in the water at the four.
We are not ordinary people, we know this. We run into the chaos and everybody else is running away.
Volusia County is a beautiful place to live, but if we don't respect it, who will?
Litter is a problem, one that we can solve.
But it's going to take all of us working together.
What matters is that we all do our part.
Don't be a litter bug.
And pick up litter whenever you see it.
Every litter bit counts.
The key pollution beautiful.
Sun Splash Park, Daytona. Incident occurred on the sand.
Tower 221, life pressure water responding outside.
840 central, inbound drowning and have fire roll close to it at the time.
223 special copy of water rescue. University approaching Daytona Beach, we got one guard in the water at the four.
We are not ordinary people, we know this. We run into the chaos and everybody else is running away. We run into the chaos and everybody else is running away.
Volusia County is a beautiful place to live, but if-
We don't respect it, who will?
Litter is a problem, one that we can solve.
But it's going to take all of us working together.
What matters is that we all do our part.
Don't be a litter bug.
And pick up litter whenever you see it.
Every litter bit counts.
To keep Volusia beautiful.
Sunspot Park, Daytona. Incident occurred on the same. Now receive you on light pressure water responding outside when I get off.
It's 14 central. In route drowning and have fire roll close to it at the time.
223 special copy of water rescue. University approach Daytona Beach, we got one guard in the water at the four.
We are not ordinary people, we know this. We run into the chaos and everybody else is running away.
Volusia County is a beautiful place to live, but if-
We don't respect it, who will?
Litter is a problem, one that we can solve.
But it's going to take all of us working together.
What matters is that we all do our part.
Don't be a litter bug.
And pick up litter whenever you see it.
Every litter bit counts.
To keep Volusia beautiful.
Sunspot Park, Daytona. Incident occurred on the same. Now receive you on light pressure water responding outside when I get off.
It's 14 central. In route drowning and have fire roll close to it at the time.
223 special copy of water rescue. University approach Daytona Beach, we got one guard in the water at the four.
We are not ordinary people, we know this. We run into the chaos and everybody else is running away.
Mike Test? Tested.
Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Is everybody here that's coming? Staff-wise? Do you have more staff coming, Ryan? No? Do we have... council members? Okay, we can, we can start. George, I'm gonna let you open it up. Welcome to the public that came to participate in this, it's important. And, um, do we need to call and roll? I think everybody's here.
Just keep treating it as you resuming the meeting you had upstairs.
Okay. We're resuming the meeting that you had upstairs. George?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, yeah, today, uh, the purpose is, uh, this afternoon, based on finally getting, uh, the final set of rules for the ARPA money, we wanted to come back to council and go back over the list of projects. Some new projects have been added. Ryan will go through, uh, various types of lists and why there is more than one list. The idea being there are projects out there that, uh, will fit the ARPA category rules directly. And then there are other, um, opportunities we can take advantage of, uh, that we will suggest that would allow, um, maybe other things that the council would like to do in the community with the ARPA monies that, uh, would essentially go into the general fund. So I will have Ryan go ahead and get started. And the first part is we're gonna go over those differences so everyone understands. And then we'll get into actually some of the hard work that we have to do, which will be to look at the requests and see what we can accommodate and what we cannot. I will stress one thing is that any kind of time, uh, element here is a little bit more centered on the ARPA direct projects because there is some rules with how long that money can be out there to be spent in that, um, make a difference. So things that we end up, um, using as part of revenue loss, that really, uh, does not have a time issue because it becomes again part of the general fund. It could be programmed at budget time, it could be programmed any time in between, uh, thereafter. So with that, uh, Ryan, I want you to go ahead and go ahead and start off on what we're gonna be.
Good afternoon, council. Uh, as George said, we're here talking about the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund, which commonly gets referred to as the ARPA funds. However, ARPA had many different programs and pots of money, but this is the large $107 million for $68,931 that the county was allocated. We've had numerous meetings on this fund. June 22nd was the first briefing of the interim final rule, which was the rules that were in effect when treasury published them. But they'd always said that there'll be a final rule. But the final rule is what George was referring to and was recently released. On July 20th, uh, council approved a budget amendment to recognize the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds as being received by the county, as well as a slate of directly funded projects. Those directly funded projects were the projects that were reported to the treasury with the balance being for revenue loss. For July 27th, uh, we had council having a workshop to discuss all the projects. And at that time, the list was a single list, but it was blended together of both revenue loss and directly eligible projects. Since then, I've learned that it's definitely better to have separate lists. That's why you have different lists in front of you so that we can talk about the two different pots of money separately. The last review of the project slate was done at the special meeting on August 31st, where we reviewed the ARPA project slate as well as, uh, that was also a budget workshop. On November 2nd is when I presented the update to revenue loss, where we talked about, uh, increased revenues and the conversion from fiscal year to calendar year because the interim final rule required at the time that our revenue loss calculations be done in a calendar year. And that has a big impact, as we'll see shortly. As a reminder, when I go through this presentation today, the ARPA had four described purposes in the law for responding to category A or 42, uh, and that is for responding to COVID-19 or its negative economic impacts. Category B, when I refer to that, it's the second bullet in the law, premium pay. Category C for revenue loss and category D for water, sewer and broadband infrastructure. The rules for one category do not apply to another category. So when we talk about category A rules and we say that, uh, the project has to benefit an impacted community, that doesn't apply for water and sewer. Water, sewer, broadband has totally different rules and separate rules from the other categories. The same holds true for revenue loss. The revenue loss funds have different rules and a lot less restrictions than category A. During the council meeting, the opening council meeting of this year on January 6th, we received the final rule, 437 pages, uh, of guidance that we reviewed. And we're gonna highlight the key changes in the guidance from what was previously presented at the July 20th meeting. One of those changes is establishing income guidelines. Previously, uh, the treasury had offered certain things to be eligible for low and moderate income households. However, they didn't define how they were going to classify low and moderate income households. And various federal programs, various federal agencies have different ways they classify that. So there were some established guidelines. Based on household size, a low-income household is that which is below 185% to the federal poverty guideline. And a moderate-income household is one that, based on household size, is below 300% of the federal poverty guideline. The numbers for A1, 3, 5 are presented on the slide. However, there are numbers that keep going. Some other key changes to category A, again, being the COVID-19 response or its economic impacts, is expanding the presumptions of disproportionate impact. If you recall, in the interim final rule, there was a list of expanded services that you could provide to those populations that, federal term, were disproportionately impacted. And then they defined what a disproportionately impacted community was. And they gave you a presumption that a qualified census tract, uh, to which the county has a few, um, and they're, uh, published by HUD, those were areas that you could presume were disproportionately impacted. With the final rule, they actually expanded it to be any low-income household in addition to qualified census tracts. And you can use aggregate census data based off of, uh, census tracts to determine other tracts that might qualify. However, at the same time, and perhaps negating some of that flexibility, they moved a lot of the services that were previously limited to those areas to be more widespread. Some services that were previously available only to disproportionately impacted communities were moved, including assistance applied for public benefits and services, i.e. navigators. That'll, that's related to a project we have on the list for the library social worker program. The programs and services to address housing insecurity, lack of affordable housing or homelessness, those are no longer limited to a qualified census tract. They can be provided in any area with low or moderate income or to specific beneficiaries that qualify under low or moderate income. In that same area of the guidance, they actually expanded, uh, another, um, category to include a presumption of home partnership programs. Home partnership program is a grant that the county receives, uh, from the federal government. And staff is familiar with the rules and the regulations of what projects would qualify under that. And now all those projects that would qualify under that grant are presumed eligible under the ARPA funds, under category A. And then finally, uh, some new restrictions were put in place for capital expenditures from category A. Now again, this is what, this bullet especially is what is important to say. Category A stands alone. What we're about to say does not apply to water, sewer, broadband, or any project done under revenue loss. For capital expenditures under category A, you now must justify any project over $1 million with a written justification form following a federal template, comparing it to at least two other feasible capital projects, and explain why, first explain what the impact is of COVID that you're trying to address, how your project addresses that, and how it addresses it better than those two other projects. When you're doing that analysis, you also have to consider timeliness of the project and alternatives versus leasing. I read those, that guidance to basically, uh, say, proceed with caution on capital projects, uh, for, for category A. Under category B for premium pay, if you recall previously, there was some guidance that defined what it meant to respond to workers. There was a limit of 150% of area median income, which our limit was $75,030. They've now said that there's a bullet point list of ways that you can respond, and they've added to that list hourly employees. Regardless of wage, hourly employees are now responded to by premium pay. So the only individuals not eligible for premium pay are salaried individuals over $75,030. However, that being said, there's another definition of what is an eligible worker. And it remains that eligible workers, uh, performing eligible work does not include remote workers. So regardless of salary, regardless of hourly, regardless of amount, if you're working remotely, you don't qualify for premium pay.
Ryan?
Yes.
Do you want to answer a question? For the remote workers though, didn't we clarify that we have, we have zero, uh, under that category for the county during staff discussion?
Yes, we've clarified that.
So I...
But for the clerk of the court, if we were to consider anything that benefited the constitutional officers, the clerk of the court has identified they have
They have a lot, right?
12 employees that work remotely.
Okay, but for the county, none?
Yeah, and for those who, uh, would like to...
Yes.
During periods of the pandemic, we did have, uh, a percentage of our workers who worked remotely, uh, some of them were working remotely part-time during the week, but they've all come back and are now full-time in the office with just rare exceptions that are not excluded from the definition.
All right. For category C, which is where the biggest impact of the new regulation, uh, new guidance comes in, first of all, you now have two options. You have a standard allowance or a formula. For the county, the formula still remains the better option. However, it's important for, uh, the cities that the standard allowance now allows you to assume at least $10 million of revenue loss occurred for any recipient of these funds. So for a lot of smaller governments, they recognize the burden of doing the revenue loss calculation and uncertainties of projecting revenue loss into the future. So they provided a standard allowance. So a lot of, uh, a lot of government agencies are gonna elect that standard allowance, especially if they received under $10 million. However, for the county, the formula would still apply. And the big news for us is they allow the formula to be done on a fiscal year or a calendar year. That is a big change. During the, uh, November 2nd meeting, I had mentioned that if they allowed for the fiscal year calculation, that a revenue loss that was at 12 million would go to 33 due to some other changes I'm about to do. other changes I'm about to describe. It's actually even a little bit higher than that. So now, assume, when you're doing the calculation, part of it is adjusting your revenues for inflation, and the assumed rate is now 5.2%. It was previously 4.1%. Or whatever your actual revenue growth was for the prior three fiscal years. This 5.2 is now our new number because our prior fiscal year growth was around 4.88%. 4.88. Also allowed is the inclusion of utility revenues. The federal government received numerous comments to the interim final rules saying that governments were impacted significantly in their utilities because late fees were waived and other abatement programs were done so that water didn't have to get shut off. So they now give you an option to include your utility revenues if you choose to do so. Interestingly, in the definitions of what needs a utility that we have to use for this calculation, mass transit is a utility, so that includes VOTRAN. VOTRAN, obviously, when the pandemic was in the heat of the pandemic, had a big decrease in ridership, so a decrease in fares. So including this actually benefits our calculation a little bit as well. Finally, there is a required addition for changes in tax rates after FY22. There was already a provision in the forms that said states could not use these funds to lower taxes. In the revenue loss category, starting with the date that this regulation was published, you have to assume that you don't change your rates. If you change your rates, you have to calculate it what it would have been if you didn't change your rates. So that plays into FY23 for us. It remains to be seen if the concept of rollback would impact that. A plain meaning of it from, from a non-attorney says that if you lower your rates, you have to include it. And we did, if you go to rollback, you're lowering the numbers. So for that reason, at this point, we already had very little chance of revenue loss in my projections for '23. I assume that at this point, we will have no revenue loss in '23. However, for '22, or for '20 and '21, a calculation that is already complete and nearly complete, the books for FY21 are nearly closed, we are still projecting revenue loss of 35 million now. So that results in the numbers you see on the screen, estimated revenue loss and the amount remaining for restricted use. In category D, which is water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, stormwater projects for flood control are now eligible. Previously, the federal government for category D on water and sewer had uniformly aligned with the State Revolving Fund or SRF programs. So in order for a project to be eligible as water or sewer under this program, it had to be SRF-eligible. The Treasury received many comments about those requirements, including on stormwater. One of the requirements of the SRF funds was there had to be a water quality benefit. The Treasury recognized that there are many flood control projects that would be worthy, and they expanded the definitions to allow those. On broadband, broadband projects can now be done in a wider area. Previously, we could not do a broadband project if the area was already served by a certain level of service, and the numbers were 25 megabits per second download, 3 megabits per second upload. If you had at least that level of service, you are ineligible to claim broadband in those areas. Some of the more urban municipalities, counties commented to the Treasury that their whole area might be served by 25 slash 3 at this point, but that's still not good enough for learning in some cases. The Treasury recognized that, and in their response, opened broadband to be eligible to any area the community can justify as underserved. In exchange for that, they added another rule that requires any provider that's given broadband funds to participate in a low-income subsidy program. And that is for any customer that might take advantage of that broadband that gets added. So now that I've gone over the changes, any questions on the uses before I go forward with this? All right. So as, as listed on the revenue loss slide, the restricted funding that is available at this point is $72,468,091. I've divided that into two lists. List A, which is the Treasury-reported ARPA directly eligible projects. Those are the projects that were included on the report that was required to be provided to the Treasury on August 31st. It's also the projects that were listed in our recovery performance plan, which was submitted to the Treasury and is publicly available on the Belushi.org website. List B is all projects that were not Treasury-reported previously. It includes some projects that we specifically, broadband was discussed before, but it was not a project that council had moved forward with in the past, so that project is on list B. The total of the two lists is currently $74,810,177, which leaves us with a deficit of $2,341,246. Someone joined the go-to meeting? That was, that was someone joining the go-to meeting, not muted. I think they've been muted since then. So on list A, you've got the projects that we previously reported to the Treasury and were previously reported to the council. COVID-19 expenses, including testing, advertising, expenses at corrections, also includes some late building modifications for libraries, the UV lights in air handlers wasn't completed in time for the other funds, so it's now in this, looks like a $100,000 project. You've got the next line for reimbursement of COVID sick leave. This was originally in the budget at $250,000. With council's amendment to extend the program to December 31st, we increased it to $500,000. With the motion that was done at the prior council meeting to then extend it even further beyond December 31st, I have thus increased that amount to $750,000. That's what's listed on here now. That is the estimate of what it will take for those council-approved programs. Mental health services was previously budgeted at, or not budgeted, listed at $2.5 million. Council on the December 14th meeting did recommend to fund some excess funding requests for alcohol, drug, and mental health funding. On the project list, those are, that line is separated out for the 600, I think, $676,000. Yeah, $676,890. So there is a partial commitment already on that $2.5 million from that, from that action. We have the Library Social Worker Program, which is that navigator thing that I was talking about before. The Treasury actually expanded that. We were previously looking to locate those two social workers in libraries that were in qualified census tracts. However, you could now do that anywhere in the county because it does, it is expanded. Cruiser Pond Stormwater Improvements was approved at $1.5 million. Then there were two large water, wastewater specifically, projects for a total of $25 million that council had previously blessed in the budget amendment. Those projects have state grants that we are in line to receive, that in order to receive those grants, we have to have matching funds. These funds would be that matching. And then lastly, you have the Ormond Beach Water Utility Interconnect at $400,000. And that makes up list A totaling $33,130,000. List B is further divided into two sets. There's lists, projects that were previously included for funding on the August 31st list. These would be projects that were not previously presented to the Treasury, but council did have funding allocated towards them on August 31st. First would be affordable housing at $2.5 million. Second would be, it was previously listed on the August 31st list as one-time bonuses. In order to make them directly eligible, they would be lump-sum premium pay. The federal term for this would be premium pay. The amount has been revised downward based off of the fact that there would be some county employees that would not be eligible. Previously, when it was listed on the county list, we were thinking we could use revenue loss funds for this. It's now listed as a directly eligible project, but as I said before, under category B, salaried individuals over $75,000 would not qualify. That's why these amounts have been revised. We expect, just to, by the way, we expect that the difference for that, if, if these numbers were revised down by $200,000. So that would be the difference of what it would have cost to do that for salaried individuals over $75,000. This includes an estimate for FICA, which would also be required. What's not listed here is, this is a carryover from what was previously presented to council. This is the same $1,000 that was previously discussed. And then we have an estimate from the constitutional officers of what it would take to do a similar type bonus for both, for all of them, the sheriff, clerk, tax collector, property appraiser, and supervisor of elections. Next is project administration. In the FY22 budget, we actually budgeted part of these funds for project administration. That is for operations manager and finance, that is primarily working on these funds, and any other administrative time that we charge these funds. Administrative expenses are directly eligible use of these funds. Finally, on this list, is a reserve for future needs and legislative changes. We'll talk more, I, I've got some examples of what would come in handy on some other areas later on, but basically it's setting aside $5 million because we don't know if there's other things that are directly eligible that we might want to pursue in the future. New projects on the list since August 31st includes broadband, listed at $5 million, an estimate of the amount that we would set aside for a project that Janine will go into further details. We actually have a whole presentation on broadband following this slide. Housing repair program, that's also a new program request, and there's a separate presentation that will explain what that is after the broadband presentation. UCF Social Services Needs Assessment, and Suzanne, do you want to talk about that for a second?
Ryan, as previously presented to council, we've received a project proposal at our request from the University of Central Florida to help us identify our service gaps in mental health and substance abuse. So for the deployment of the remainder of the mental health dollars that Ryan just noted, as well as substance abuse, which will come into play with our opioid settlement, as well as other future actions of council, we're asking for this allocation of just under $30,000 so we know we can deploy these dollars to meet the greatest needs of the community.
All right. The next line on there is for reimbursement of workers' compensation expenses due to COVID-19. There are some instances where COVID-19 is resulting in a workers' compensation claim against the county's self-funded insurance plan. Reimbursing of those expenditures is eligible under ARPA. Also, same concept for medical insurance. We are self-funded for health insurance, so the new guidance specifically allows, although I previously believed it would be allowed anyway, for reimbursement of our self-insurance claims for medical. There are nine stormwater projects on the list. You can refer to each one of those projects and what it would do on the list. And then finally, there is a proposal to use some of these funds for a portion of a project at the landfill, that is a stormwater runoff project for the landfill's new cell. That is a very large project that would be needed at the landfill, and this would just be a partial allocation for that. The total of the new projects listed above is $30,590,177. And now it's time for broadband.
I'll start again. Janine Jennings, Director of Business Services. And this is still a little bit about what we covered. Last time we did the infrastructure with a little bit more detail on broadband. So as we talked about last time, broadband has become a little bit more of the buzz through the ARPA funding, and it is basically a lack of infrastructure, services, and devices. And the difference between broadband and anything else is just means that the amount of time it takes to upload and download any type of data, picture, services, whatever, that's what it needs to meet. It's the 25 megabits per second up and three down. It also allows users to use multiple things within their house, and it really kind of is, it came to fruition when people were trying to work out of their house and also go to school out of their house and do multiple things, and they just did not have the capabilities using cell service. And this is different than cell services, even though we are looking at some options with towers and all for some of those areas that might not meet this qualification, but basically that's what broadband is. So really what we focused on is, we started up in the Pearson-Saville, and at the meeting, I think the first, the end of December, we decided to look at DeLeon Springs, and we went from DeLeon Springs up to look at where we could start with the infrastructure. And what now, what it looks like right now is if you look at the math, it starts in DeLeon Springs and pretty much stops at the Pearson Library as far as infrastructure. This one section that we're looking at doing are 2,679 addresses, which is 71% of the entire county as far as underserved and non-served. So that's the area we really want to focus on is from DeLeon Springs. You'll see red and yellow, and it just means that some of them have some sort of capability, maybe by satellite, but they really just don't have the infrastructure. That's what they consider the underserved. Like I said, it's 71% of the area. We are looking at a six-to-12-month timeframe, which I understand now might be a little bit longer as far as people who are starting the process now. And we are looking at about $8.5 million to do that one section of Belushi County.
What's a quick question? Was Sabille part of the original?
Yes, yes. All the way up. Yep.
Because you said it stopped at Pearson.
Some of the, you do have some infrastructure, but then it kind of stops right there. So you might, as, in DeLeon Springs, you may have some, you don't have a lot. So we took it, the whole thing, and we looked at the FCC census from DeLeon Springs all the way up through Sabille. Yep.
That's what I wanted to make sure.
Thank you. So what we are looking at is putting out an RFP. We have it ready. This is it. And what we're looking for is, we are trying to structure it with a cost share formula with whoever bids on it that can help us. So for instance, if we are given $5 million and it's 8 million, we split it, we still have a little bit left that we can maybe go into some of the other little areas in Belushi County. We want to use the ARPA funding as designated per the broadband and the updated broadband process. We are also working with the school board right now. We have had conferences with them about seeing if we can partner and actually, that would give us more give us more money to actually hit some of the other areas that we would like to be able to handle. The way that the bid is off, the RP is structured also, is that it will give us the opportunity once we get the pricing in place for that one area to go use that pricing and negotiate into the other areas. So even though we're starting with the big one, the intent is if we have the funding, we can go into some of the other areas we're looking at too. We are also, we continue to look at other grant opportunities as we have, as Ms. Gertman knows, we've talked to everybody in the state. We are looking at any other opportunity to add on to this, and as those come available, we're pursuing them. And the last bit of it is that we did add per the updated compliance with the ACP, the Affordable Connectivity Program, is a part of this RFP that should go out. Any questions? Yes, Ms. Gertman? As soon as y'all bless it, it's ready to go. And we also sent, the school board has also looked at it, and they made their edits. So we have hit their compliance.
We would have to have the full funding now. So you can't go out on RFP unless you have the full funding, and even with what we've asked for here, you would not be fully funded. You would have to have partners. So cannot go out until we have the partners and so.
Well, the RFP is actually going to ask for, it is, it is telling you you have to be a partner.
From that provided, right.
Janine, you said you've talked to the school board already. Are they absolutely a partner and they're in on the RFP, or it sounds like we're going to send it out before the cart?
Yeah, no, they were checking. That's why I didn't say definitively, but.
We don't want to send it out, I would assume, before the school board gives us something?
First thing is, it's not even on the list right now. So first step is, is for you guys to decide that's going to be on the list.
The holdup would be that we just may not be able to do as much as we'd like.
Because of not getting school board funding, or?
Everybody that comes in with us gives us a little bit more opportunity to split the costs, so it helps us to cover more areas with more people involved.
Okay, now to talk about housing rehabilitation programs. You all have approved annually very small rehabilitation programs each year that we fund out of our federal and state grant funds. And one of the challenges that we face is limited amounts of funding that can go towards this at one time. And also staff has challenges in getting contractors online for very small projects. It's very hard for a contractor to say, okay, I'll do five $10,000 projects when they're potentially something else. So we're putting this forward for your consideration. There are actually three different kinds of rehabilitation programs that we do, and these are all homeowner housing. Homeowner rehabilitation, wind hazard, and emergency repair. In order to do all of those, we have a range of approximately $4.2 million to $6.9 million. So the homeowner rehabilitation provides funds to rehabilitate eligible single-family homes with health or safety issues. Sometimes reconstruction is recommended if health or safety issues that are not structurally or economically feasible to rehabilitate. Wherever possible, we are going to try and rehabilitate. You recently approved a project where we had to go and reconstruct the entire project because it just wasn't safe living conditions. Currently, we have 62 households on the waiting list. The estimated cost is anywhere from 3.7 million to 6.1. And let me explain that range. The 3.7 is what we are estimating without having done our due diligence on each project because we don't do it until we have the money ready to go. And 6.1 is the maximum allowable in the program for each of those. We are not going to spend the maximum allowable for each one, but we wanted to be honest and give you what the complete range would be if by chance they all went to the maximum. The next category is wind hazard. This provides funds for insulation of wind hazard mitigation for window and door shutters, wind rated garage doors, and gable and tie downs. We have 17 households on that waiting list, and the cost can range from 169,000 to 195,000. And all of these, one of the things that's important as we're going through the process of our affordable housing process, this ensures long-term affordability, and it keeps affordable housing stock that's already in existence in place. If someone has to move out of this housing, we're going to have to find new housing for them, and that's actually more expensive than fixing the problem. And then finally, we have emergency repair, and this is for immediate health and safety issues. This could be roof, HVAC, septic, potable water, ADA accessibility. 23 households pending assistance, and that's anywhere from 276,000 to 575,000. If this is something that you decide to do, we will use other federal grant funds to pay for the administration. So the entire amount would go towards the affordable rehabilitation projects. There would be no administration costs that would come out of this, and we can do that. We would have to hire probably two to three staff. And our thought is, and working with purchasing and facilities, we'd put together a bigger project to put out on the street. So we might get a better chance of saying, hey, over the next three years, we're going to spend $4 million if that's what it is, and therefore we might get some better commitments and can move through these things over the next three years.
Any questions? Yes.
So you caught me with the, oh, by the way, we're going to have to hire two or three people to do this program. So what is the cost of that approximately to hire the two or three people?
I don't have that number. I can get back to you, but it's not coming out of this money. It'll come out of other federally, federal grant funds that allow us to do a project and use those funds to complete a project using other grant funds.
Are those going to be temporary people, or are those people we're going to have to pay?
No, these will be what we call permanent temporary employees. So we would hire them as a county employee, but when the grant funds and the project is up, they're no longer county employees.
Mr. Chair? Just one more comment and just refresh the memories of council on these programs. The Reconstruction and Rehabilitation Program, as you may remember, has a waitlist, and we have not opened that portal for new applications since December of 2020. And we have homeowners who have been patiently waiting and have been on our list since 2017. And similarly on wind hazard, the last time we opened that portal was also December of 2020, and we have people on that list from 2019. So as some of you have heard me say, this may be an opportunity to sort of wipe those lists clean using ARPA money since home projects have now become eligible under the new guidance, and then we can start reopening those portals using the state and federal grants afresh in the coming years and hopefully have a better chance of staying on top of those needs. Thank you.
All right. So that concludes the eligible projects, then, or directly eligible projects, sorry. Now you have the projects that are for consideration of general fund savings from revenue loss. The 35 million that I'm estimating, just for full explanation as to how that works, once you've calculated revenue loss, you actually have to claim a qualifying expenditure. But general government expenditures qualify. So anything that the government normally does with a few exceptions qualifies. So what we would be doing, based off of prior council direction, to maximize our revenue loss, we claim, what I've officially been filing is the same thing as what we were doing with the old money, the CARES Act money, which is public safety wages and benefits. So for the revenue loss dollars, that's officially what we're claiming is corrections, beach safety, other public safety wages and benefits, which then frees up those salaries' budgets in the general fund. So then you have savings in the general fund. And that's why this title is called General Fund Savings from Revenue Loss, because you're not actually spending the ARPA dollars at this point. The ARPA dollars were used on the public safety wages that are eligible under the, under the federal rules. So as George alluded to before, these funds are now savings in the general fund that do not have the same time restrictions and do not have the federal restrictions that apply to them, because this is now general fund money. The 35 million that's estimated has been divided into two lists. List C, which I call the committed projects, of which there are two, two sets basically. And List D, which is potential projects, which are all projects that were previously presented on the August 31st list that do not qualify for ARPA direct funding like the premium pay did or the affordable housing does. The total of those two lists is 55,663,900, which leads to a deficit of 20,663,900. List C, which is the two projects or groups of projects that I have listed as committed for funding were based off of, that term commitment was based off of what I believe council approved and done, which is committed to these projects. One will be in the September, or sorry, July 20th meeting for the client divorce landings. And then secondly, during the August 31st budget workshop, one of the ways that we made reductions to the general fund budget was to pull projects for the Marine Science Center out of the general fund and move them to the ARPA fund. So that would be a revenue loss project. It's not water sewer broadband, and it doesn't qualify as a COVID response. So therefore, it's on this list. On List D, like I said before, that's everything that was on the previous list that council had funding allocated to. There are quite a few projects on the list, and the list is available on the agenda. If you want any further description or anything, we can go through those, but I'm not going to read each one of these items off the slide individually. The total of those projects that had been previously presented that had carried forward from the August 31st list are 44,243,981. There are two new projects for consideration of revenue loss. One is the Sheriff's Juvenile Assessment Center, and the other is the Property Appraisers' GIS or Geographic Information Systems, Infrastructure Improvements. There are two separate presentations, one from the sheriff's team and one from the property appraiser that followed this. Any questions before we go into those presentations? All right. I think sheriff's people are here remotely, also some in the room. I'm not quite sure how we're going to proceed at this point. Taking a, sheriff's department participating by Zoom. We also have Ryan and the sheriff, of course, is there by Zoom. Who's going first?
I'm going to go and bring in the sheriff. Carl Laquan, Director of Juvenile Services. Sheriff Chitwick, can you hear us? Sheriff, can you hear us? Sheriff, can you hear us? Is he muted or you have him muted?
He's muted.
Yeah.
The other people on the go to meeting call cannot unmute people remotely, so he has to unmute himself.
Yeah. Here we go. Sheriff, can you hear me? Sheriff, can you hear me? Sheriff?
No, he doesn't have a problem with them.
Uh, I don't know if you guys can hear me, but I am having technical difficulties. Hello, George, hello, everybody. I can't hear what you guys were saying.
We can hear you now, if you can go ahead.
And it's, for some reason, I don't know, that's your, that you got to do it. I, I got you, man. I, I got this. You want, you want to start?
Yeah.
Okay. First, I want to thank the county manager and Ryan and staff for helping us with this new vision concept. I don't want to speak for Sheriff Johnson, but I know that this effort years ago tried to, tried to do the same thing that we were doing. Just to say that with ABLE, we were in a pilot program with ECF, and in the first 90 days of that pilot program, we were able to help 69 kids that needed to be screened and placed into the proper treatment. Some of those kids were beta acted if not for this pilot program. So this is, this is part of where we're heading with the JACS. SMA is possibly in Beltona. We have six iPads that were purchased by FDML. And when we dispatch to somebody who was in a mental crisis, we ask them if they want to talk to an SMA professional, hand them the iPad, and step out of the way. The other beauty with this JACS is going to be that, like last year for the calendar year 2021, DJJ screened over 1,000 of our Belushi County youths. But in that screening, it doesn't entail substance abuse and mental health screening. And that's, that's what's going to happen with this, if we're able to pull this off. Most important thing is this isn't a law enforcement, the decision is not being run by us. The county's going to help us see if they got the warning, but it's all of the professionals in dealing with our juveniles, all the specialists that are going to be there under one roof to make sure that these kids get the proper help that they need, help the families conquer the medical insurance issues that are there. And I know that Rhonda Harvey is going to carry the word and make the progress. I'm going to shut off.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm not real sure how this, will someone flip the pages for me there? Okay. Several years ago, actually, we all started talking about the need to have a juvenile assessment center, which we did have way back when. We had a juvenile assessment center that was primarily funded through DJJ funding. At any rate, over the last few years, we've been talking about, number one, we have a lot of resources for kids in the Belushi County area. I don't want anybody to think that we don't. We have a lot of resources. The issue that kept recurring, and for whatever reason, the sheriff seems to be the dumping ground whenever this resource, whenever this shortage occurs, there is no singular purpose where all of the resources are known to the agency that happens to be dealing with the child at any given point in time. So this concept that the sheriff came up with was for a juvenile assessment center. Then over the course of the last three years, during the pandemic, things seemed to have gotten a little bit worse. We've had some pretty high-profile cases, and we've all kind of come together and tried to cobble together a plan, a family resource plan, and we worked for individuals. So from that, what came out of our collaboration was that we really need more than a juvenile assessment center. We need a family resource center, and to make sure that we're not duplicating services, we're all talking about the services together. And that's where this concept came up with. In 2021, the Belushi County school system alone referred more than 3,400 children to mental health services. Some were to their internal mental health team, others were to the community team at large. And then you would have a deputy involved in a crisis somewhere, trying to, working with college to try to get things where they needed to go, and they didn't know that these kids were already linked. these kids were already linked with services. So there was a lot of duplication, a lot of gaps, and things like that. So what we want to do, the goal of this project, is to support the success of children and families in Blueish County. That is our entire goal. So born out of the frustration of the sheriff's department, came a lot of meetings and collaborations with a lot of the agencies that are involved with the juvenile justice, kids involved in juvenile justice. So we want to use this resource center as a collaborative approach to put into play programs and services where all of us as agencies are actually talking together. The agencies that we have head around the table, they're listed up here, is Halifax Behavioral Services, SMA, the Blueish Sheriff's Office, Blueish County Schools, Department of Children and Families, and there are other agencies that are insulated to this, but these are the six that were typically involved in the discussions. You flip that for me? Okay, why, even the next slide. Okay, the proposed site is a vacant building that we have, it's an SMA building at 1150 Red John Road. It's about 13,000 square feet. It has been vacant for about four years. It is an older building. It used to be the detoxification center when Stewart Marchment Center existed. Over the course of the last few years, we've done a few walkthroughs, and the sheriff's department had put their eyes on some of the services and some of the ways that we can configure it. And we haven't done a whole lot of detail on that, but it'll be to come. This is just part of the concept. We gave a, this is a very rough estimate, and all the members, as we come down through these slides, believe me, they are estimates, because we put it together pretty quickly. So we've estimated that the build-up to accommodate the security and the safety issues that the sheriff has identified, you can see the low estimate to be just over $1 million, the high estimate about 1.6. Again, that would be each agency that is involved looking at what they need to have a safe area to screen or to deal with or deliver services to the children. Type A, B, and C, BSO, the Blueish Sheriff's Office proposes to provide 24/7 presence on-site so that the safety issues are somewhat mitigated. And the new funding for the eight FTEs needed for 24/7 coverage by Blueish Sheriff's Office, you can see where it is. I can't read those numbers, but they're not low. Like 1.5 or something. I hope you all can see that a little better than I can. But that is the new funding that will be required solely for the sheriff's department to kick this off the ground. The Department of Juvenile Justice would be moving their entire screening unit over at no cost, no additional cost to the project, but the in-kind value of their contribution is over half a million dollars on an annual basis. DCF would bring, in collaboration with the Community Partnership for Children, they would bring their assessment team, I think it's called a community, they would bring their integrated practice team, which they do this in a way, it is typically a Zoom call or a phone call where they staff difficult cases. That function would live at the center as well. It would also have some virtual availability, but it would bring that function to the overall operation of the Family Resource Center. They would also add care coordination, which is a very, very specific type of case management. I won't go into that, but it is very necessary in immediate hours after a crisis has occurred, and then for a period of eight to 12 weeks, where we make sure that the individuals are engaged in services. Okay, SMA would bring several of our units over, our children in need of services and family in need of services. We would bring those teams over to the unit. We are asking for an additional three FTEs to be funded through this project with the number of agencies and the number of personnel that will be on-site. We feel it's very, very important to have someone coordinating the day-to-day operation of this site, and then we would add a screener to be on-site there with the sheriff's department. The expense that you see there that's associated with SMA healthcare is twofold. One is personnel, the three personnel, and then the overhead of the building. Next slide. The Blueish County Schools has proposed, and I believe there's representatives here from Blueish County Schools, has proposed to add some services to persons. Sure. That would be great. Please do.
Good afternoon, everybody. Scott Ford, Superintendent of Blueish County Schools. Yes, we are going to have some folks be at the center. Before I start talking about the folks, let me tell you how much I support this project and why. What we see right now in our schools is the tip of the iceberg. This pandemic has had tremendous effect on our families and on our young people. And so mental health is of great concern to all of us. This type of center, this JAC center, this juvenile assessment center, is something that I've worked with in the past in other counties, and it's extremely important. I know that when we ride from meeting to meeting and we go around the county, you see students walking around. You see my students walking around. And sometimes they're not in school. And what we're proposing is that we have social services at our, at the center, a social worker and a counselor, or two social workers, that we can connect those students back to their home zone school. We can connect our families to additional services. We can work collaboratively to start tackling some of this problem. To me, it's a no-brainer. It's an easy commitment for us as a school board to partner, because these are our kids. And so I basically, I'm here today to let you know that I support it. Sheriff Chitwood and I have had a lot of conversations over the last three years about the need for this. And anyway, any questions for me as superintendent? Or sit down? Yes?
So by partner, do you mean sharing the cost?
We are sharing the cost. That $150,000 are the, are our employees that we're paying for.
This says 5 million.
Yeah, we're not sharing that cost. Good try, though. Thank you.
Okay, I think we have another few slides, then I'll quit talking. Okay, Halifax Behavioral is another partner to our effort. Currently, HBS provides mental health screening services and assessment services for children who have been baker acted. What we are asking for the additional support for this project is to bring one of their baker act screening personnel to the project on the weekends. Currently, that service would be that the deputy would take the individual to Halifax Behavioral during certain hours. At other times, the child has to go to the emergency room. This would try, this is an effort to try to really bring all the services into a more adolescent-friendly environment than the emergency room as when the child's already in a crisis. And this number here, again, we put this together pretty quickly, and this was just a very, is Jim here? This was a very quick estimation of what one counselor would cost, so we just put that across there, so please don't get me to that. Everyone else got a 5% increase, as we projected over the three or four-year period, but we shortened Halifax on that. Some of the services that they would provide, I guess Jim could go into a little bit more if you want to know about them. Next slide, please. Thank you. Okay, this is kind of a summary of the number, these numbers do not necessarily add up to the slides prior. What this shows you is the number of personnel, total, this is funded and those that we are requesting funding for to be associated with the project. That's the column there on the left. You can see on the SMA's line, we've got seven persons there. We are bringing four already funded to the table and asking for funding for three more. And is there one more slide, perhaps? Okay. Now, this, that is, believe me, this is a very, very rough concept, because we know what we need, and we also know that it is not cheap, and we are looking for ways to get this off the ground. We totally expect to have this funded in other ways. We are, I know ARPA funding is one-time money, that you have X number of months, you know, in which it has to be spent. We are looking for seed money so that we would have the opportunity to apply for grants, to apply for allocations that would help us continue this. The initial investment in it would give us an opportunity to collect data, collect outcomes, and then be able to show the value and show that while it is an expense on the front end, it really is an investment in our community and in our children. So this is our concept. There's a lot of us here looking to answer any questions that you might have for.
All right, so the same question that I asked, is Halifax Health a partner?
Yes.
So they're participating in this cost?
Some of it would be cost, and some of it would be additional positions. What we're trying, you have helped fund our increase on our screening department, RAL Open Until Midnight, and so on, but we can move some of those staff around to help with this. The other thing that we hadn't really thought about was, I really would like to plant some of our CAT team staff over there, because that's a natural program that would pick a lot of these kids up potentially. So in working with DCF recently, I've been talking with them about increasing our staff, our capacity in CAT, and this would be a great place to plant some of those folks. So yes, we're, we're. I don't know that we've gotten that far yet. I think there's been discussion about talking with some of the city folks, as well as some of the other folks in the county, because the problem is that this came up as a really quick presentation to y'all, so we've not gone down that path yet, but I think it certainly needs to happen. When I look at baker acts, we know that there are particular pockets of towns and communities where we're getting our highest number of baker acts. And I could pull that data and go and sit with those individuals directly and say, this could help your place tremendously if we could focus you all going to this program as opposed to other places.
Listen, we have a lot of people listening in from outside, and they don't know who you are or where you're from.
I'm Jim Terry. I'm the administrator for psychiatry at Halifax. I have both the adult and child services.
Mr., I'm sorry, Ms. Gertman.
I'm sorry. I'm looking at him.
Mr. Branner, can I just also remind all of council to please speak in your microphones? We're having a really hard time hearing you over there. I understand you want to address the individuals that are...
Right, it's difficult, because you have them behind us instead of, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So I am, I am fully supportive of a program. I believe in this. I know we either invest in it in the front end or the back end, right? And I've been concerned, from what I've seen in the community, that there hasn't, didn't appear to be a central place for this level of service, for this level of need, and I think the pandemic has just added to that. But also, just where we are evolving in society with our young people, I think it's just the right thing to do. But I also think it's the right thing to do for the community to recognize it and be a part of the overall solution. And I get that these ARPA dollars are one-time dollars, and I'm really interested to understand where other funding would come from, right? Because if we seed it and the other, you know, resources don't come together, what happens?
The help would, and let me kind of say, some of the things that I've read recently say that there's like a three-to-one return. If you invest in your services at the front end, which is the lower levels of care that we're proposing with this JAC, you avoid the high-end costs, which is hospitalization and inpatient stay. Those are really high-cost services. So if you can invest at that lower point, you better. I think what we need to do then is, like I said, take the time over the next two years to figure out how can we bill? Where can we go down grand dollars? I recently met with one of the insurance companies, and they're willing to help us try to develop a system which would, could also include them partnering through Telman Psychiatry with us.
Right. But I guess my question then is, if you gain three-to-one on the front end because you're not having inpatient hospitalizations or baker acts, do those dollars move from here to there?
Well, I hope so. I mean, that's kind of the goal. I'm going to be honest with you, I am never lacking for business on the inpatient units. I don't worry about that ever, because the number of kids and the number of people we've seen going up in the system is certainly going to, it's still going to have that demand. But I think we have to come up with a way to pull dollars from other places, like the outpatient areas, such that, and some of this comes down to AKA money, some of it comes down to insurance companies, some of it comes down to the community saying, I'm going to invest in something that will keep kids from higher levels of care, because I can treat more people at a lower level than I can at a higher level.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, like I said, that's my concern. I certainly see the need and the expectation, but I'm really concerned, are we, is the community ready to reinvest in our children and put our money where our mouth and our concerns and the safety of our community in future? Are we willing to do that beyond this ARPA dollars that this says funding required for a year? And what we're talking about is, you know, extensive, expansive, and expensive, right? Yes, there's under no circumstances why pretend that this is not an expensive ask. What I will tell you, though, is seed money is the only way that SMA Healthcare knows how to operate. Over the course of years, we've approached almost every project with, okay, this is three, almost all our grants are three-year money. So we get a three-year grant, and it's like, oh no, what are we going to do when you're four? What we know is that programs that work pay for themselves, and we are able with seed money to build the case for why something should be continued. That's not to say that there haven't been a few failed efforts, but we know pretty quickly, before the three years is up, if this is worth moving forward with or applying extra initiative to it. Just this week, we went before the Public Safety Coordinating Council and asked for permission to apply for criminal justice reinvestment grant when that season opens up. It's typically in February. We talk grant in our agency, that's what we talk about. But that season opens in February, we're anticipating that, and then we'll go through an evaluation with all the community partners. We have to do something called a sequential intercept map to see where are the problems? What does the community want to focus on? So that is one potential avenue. There are others, other grant sources, and we would be very, very aggressive in going forth to try to get this funded in perpetuity. And I don't think it would be reasonable for us as an agency, and particularly with experience that we've had over the years, to expect that the county council is going to fund this forever. We don't expect that. We would keep you totally updated, and we fully believe that we would be able to find alternative sources to keep the machine running. Right now, we really need to get it off the ground to demonstrate that it really works. During 2021, you know, I totally... During 2021, you know, I told you that almost 3,400 children have been referred from the health services. Well, the county of Volusia, statistically speaking, has a 19 per 100,000 suicide rate for children, and that is about 50% more than the state rate, which is 13. So, that is a number that none of us want to carry around very long. I, I don't know that this is the answer to it, but it is certainly is a real approach to trying to solve it. Any other questions for me?
I don't know if this question's for you or who, but is this going to be a residential or a holding facility?
No, no.
So, in other words, all you're doing is bringing them through, you're either sending them home or sending them to DCF.
Right, finding the right place for them to go.
Are they not overnighter?
No.
Okay.
I just have one. I know, and just kind of looking at, the Department of Juvenile Justice has a website that lists the juvenile assessment centers around the state. It seems like there are different models out there, but as I understand from the presentation that, I guess Stuart Marchman would be the lead agency for this operation.
I, I think, I guess it's a natural thing for us to take a lead, particularly if we're writing grants and things of that nature, but, but I think it would be fair to say that this, the lead agency in this initiative, at least up until this point, has been the Volusia Sheriff's Department. They feel the brunt of the lack of services. They feel the brunt when services are duplicated or if there's a gap. All of that falls to the sheriff's department and what they want to do, they, they want to do their job, but then they want to hand these kids off to everyone and make sure that they get the services and leave so they're not called back out to that family, which is the other reason that they really wanted to be more embellished with family resources because it's not just about the child. The child always needs to go back home.
I've got another question too. It kind of looks like in a manner that it's all kind of being dumped, all the law enforcement being dumped on the sheriff's office. Where do our local police departments fall into assisting the sheriff's office in this big endeavor? Because when it gets down to it, you're going to see half the kids coming out of the greater Daytona Beach area and it really puts an additional, a big additional burden on the sheriff's office. Have they been contacted to see, are they willing to help with some of these FTEs? Because it's a big effect on them and takes a big problem off of them.
I, I can answer that. If I look at my Baker Acts and I can pull that data of where they come from, it's pretty even across the county sheriff plus the, all the Cs. I mean, I get folks from Port Orange and New Smyrna and Ormond Beach. I mean, Baker Acts come from any police department. So, I think, I think your question is legitimate, which is how do we sit down with the towns and say, "How are you going to support this?"
Ryan, real quick. Item 112, 124, and 126 on that sheet that you gave out to us, there's approximately 2.9 million, almost 2.99. I'm sorry. Is that something? It's item 112, which is mental health and substance abuse projects, 1.8 million. Number 124, drug and mental health funding, 676,000. And then library social worker programs, 480. Is that something? Are those already locked, locked in or do we have any grants start with that or is that something? This, this community center, it might be overlapping with those programs. Is this something we can work in if this isn't locked down? I'm trying to kick this money up because it's, it's apparent and it's obvious that we need this, you know? I don't think there's anybody in this room that can, that hasn't said our youth is our, our greatest asset, you know, and if anything is worthwhile, I'd be willing to put some of the projects that I had put up. If anything's worthwhile, this is it, is what I'm getting at. So, trying to find a way, this is...
Out of the projects that you listed, you're referring to the $2.5 million mental health allocation that for purposes of the list, I divided it into two parts. The 676,089, that was the amount that council approved on December 14th meeting for the additional alcohol, drug, and mental health annual funding that was above what the general fund budget was. The 1,823,911 is the original $2.5 million allocation less the amount that council approved on December. That amount, there's been no projects committed to it yet, but that's, that would be up to council discussion.
112. I'd be willing to, if I need to put that in motion form to look at, to see if that would be something this council would be interested in doing. I mean, we don't, even if it's something we chew on for a little bit, I don't know if it has to be done now, but I'd kind of like to get the ball rolling on it if it's, if the option is still open there.
There would be one, one thing that I would like to add to that. The 676,089 that council approved this year, if you recall that in the prior year, we used some COVID transition funds to fund a similar request. The amount of the requests each year is coming in above the general fund. There's been a trend of that. So, the 1.8 million that you have, the 1,823,000, that would be about three years more of the amount that's already been coming in over the request. If we were to take the 1,823,000 and use it towards, and, and not use it towards that purpose, but, and the reason I'm not saying funded towards this is because there, these are two different lists. There's the directly funded projects and then the revenue loss projects. If you were to not fund the 1,823,000, next year, if the funding requests come in higher again for mental health services, for the alcohol, drug, and mental health funding above what the general fund is already contributing, you'll be looking for the general fund to fill that gap or you'd be reducing awards.
At the library social worker program?
Nothing has been committed to that. That program has not had any expenses yet.
Yeah, just let me add in. You know, this is going to be tough, kind of going through and looking for things. I have talked to the sheriff. You know, there is an item in the revenue loss that he, from the previous meeting for the training track, and that is definitely an area that, again, that was a high-level, planning-level estimate on that, and he, this is very important to him and he would take less money there in place with this particular project. And they are looking for seed money, is my, is my understanding, so you'd be looking in the neighborhood of, based on what we just heard today, I think it was 5 million...
374.
What's on the project list is 5,374,919. I do want to clarify what that number represents because the slide that's up on the screen right now is the year one cost. There are additional costs for the sheriff's office. The 5,374,919 was the sheriff's request for the build-out and the four years of the Volusia County Sheriff's Office request. If there is additional funding, which it sounds like there will be additional funding for SMA that's needed, that is not on this list yet. What we put on here was what the sheriff's request was.
And that, just to be really clear, that 5,374,000 does not include any of the partnership sharing money between Halifax?
It does not. And that is, that is just the sheriff's office for four years and the build-out that's on the, that's on the slide here.
And on this slide, annual match, 995,000, you anticipate that every year?
This, this presentation was put together by the sheriff's office. I'm interpreting what I think I've heard before, and I believe that's the in-kind value that they had on one of these slides. DJJ's the 519,000. That number right there is not additional funding. It was referred to as in-kind dollars. And there was another number from SMA. This one right here, this match funding, the four FTEs, they'd refer to four FTEs that were coming from SMA and three FTEs of an additional request. That 475,000 plus the 519 makes the in-kind amount that's listed on the summary, or the match amount, sorry.
Has this taken into account that basically for the first year, you're not going to have any employees because it's going to take a year to get this going? Have you backed that, the FTEs out for the first year?
The, the amount that we put here is what the sheriff's request was, so if you do consider that, I, I don't know if there's an overlapping plan for, maybe there's some staffing that's still going to be needed during the transition or something like that, but if you were to say that nothing's going to happen until the build-out happens, then you would be looking at five years' worth of expenses, one year being the build-out and then year one through four being actually year two through five.
He's thinking. Oh, the hamster was spinning. Should we wait till we come back so we can drill down on some, you know, some of these? I mean, this is a good, great discussion. I think we're off to a great start here. It's evident that we, we want to make this happen. Something I was looking at too, 104 and 108. 104 on the direct eligible projects, reserved for future community needs. That's a pretty open-ended title. And then remaining COVID expenses, 2.5 million. I think we can get this off the ground. We just got to, got to figure it out, but I'd like to see if we can sit down and fine-tune it a little bit more before we proceed.
I do want to make sure that we're keeping, keeping cognizant of the fact that you have two different lists. The list that you're referring to with the, the numbers, for those that are listening online, there was a cheat sheet that was put together where the projects were given numbers. These are not separate projects. These are just, there's numbers assigned to the project so that they can be referred to. The whole separate list on the back, the projects that start in 200, those are the revenue loss projects, the same revenue loss projects that have been presented all along. The projects on the front are the directly eligible projects. The sheriff's project is on the back sheet. It is listed as project 204. So, if you were looking to make changes so that you could fund this program, you'd be looking at changes to the second list, not necessarily the first list.
Yes.
And just, I'm sorry, Sheriff. And just, you know, if you were to calculate the SMA staffing costs they're requesting for the four years and Halifax Health's staffing request for four years, that would be roughly an additional 2.1 million, so that would be added on to the 200s list.
That would be added on to the 200s list, although partially, it could partially be funded out of the 100 list, depending on what the services provided would be. I would rather caveat that to, to what council member Johnson just said. If there's a year build-out, then the services that are going to be provided would be in calendar year 23, 24, 25, and 26. If we added it to the direct ARPA list, you can only fund 23 and 24. So, the SMA and Halifax cost number, the 2.1 million that was just estimated, I believe what we're looking is mental health funding for those. You could fund half of it from the first list, but the other half, if you wanted to give four years of funding, would be in years that are not eligible for ARPA direct funding. So, that would have to be revenue loss if you're looking at funding those final years.
Ryan, this feels vaguely like first-step shelter where Daytona Beach pays a lot of the expenses, the other cities pay a little bit, the county contributes a lot of money. This case, this is a county, you said it, this is a county-wide problem, but it sounds like the county is carrying the load on it without help from the cities and some help from the hospital and, and the school board. Is that a reasonable assessment?
This is a project that was submitted by the sheriff's office. Our own county attorney asked the question about city participation. I, I don't really want to speak to that issue.
Is it possible to go out and, and ask for it? Absolutely. I, I think it is appropriate. I don't know because it's approaching the time.
Can we charge for the cities to be involved?
One thing, Danny, sure. There it is. Yeah, you can ask him.
His mic looks like it's off again.
Mike, you need, you need to have you.
Okay.
There you go. How do we get the cities to participate in this? I need some need in this too.
Uh, I don't, if they're watching what has occurred with the hunger shelter, I can't, I don't think we have the time to wait. I think we need to get it up and running, get it up and running, turn around to the police, say, "Hey, you need, you need to hurry up here." Because if, if, I mean, all we got to do is look back to what happened at June, a 14-year-old and a 12-year-old, eventually Baker Act, like 12 times, and you see the mental health issues that are there, and yet I believe this is a system that probably abated that. Those kids have been screened properly, but, you know, none of the cities are climbing to help us out here. I think we as the county have to lead and then, and make them follow. Hope that makes sense.
Yeah, I, it does, and I don't think this is, it, it is kind of like the first-step shelter, but it isn't. This is everybody's kids and there's not a family that's not touched with this. But moving forward, I think the cities need to be veiling up a little bit on this also. This should not be all on the sheriff's department and all of us listed here on this, this program, but it's definitely is needed. Mike, you know my situation and I've had to use those services with the grandchild, so I know the importance of it.
I, I do want to thank that quick because I think he, he hit the nail right on the head. I mean, he feeds the kids from the entire county he's dealing with, so he, he knows what's going on out there. And I think once we get it up and running, we can massage things, you know, there's things that maybe can be done by Zoom or new technology doesn't require a, the building. And then we could start dissecting how many kids are from Daytona to get to Johnson's point, how many kids are coming from New Smyrna and say, "Hey, you guys got to, to help in this fight."
Sheriff, can you hear me still?
This is Heather Post.
Can you hear me? Yep. So, we had talked to SMA about, you know, we had asked, so who is really taking the lead on this? Are we, can we be confident that then, in fact, what you're saying is that the Volusia County Sheriff's Office is taking the lead on the JAC Center and...
Absolutely.
You will ensure, like the police academy, that it, that it turns out awesome?
We're praying. I just, I just want to let you guys know that we have been meeting with all of the state, SMA, DCF, Volusia County Schools, Halifax Health. We've had ad nauseam meetings about how will we deliver the services that are needed and we all came to you bringing, "Look, you see, this has to be, we have to get everybody under one roof where all the providers are there, these kids are screened from head to toe on with their families and put round pegs in our court."
Well, so, if, if I'm hearing that the Volusia County Sheriff's, or the Volusia Sheriff's Office will be basically running the, the JAC and responsible for it and, you know, we can come to you with any questions and that it's not going to be sort of farmed out to other people, then I would feel very confident in that. If it's, I would hate to, to learn that it's farmed out, you know, and, and ends up being questionable.
I, I hear your, hear your points. I take it to heart. I think we have an incredible team that we've assembled, mental health workers, school district employees, DCF, and, and everybody that we're dealing with are professionals that want this to succeed and, and we know the time is right, right now, to strike and get this done.
Okay. There's zero doubt in my mind that we should be doing this, for sure. We've been needing it for decades. Yeah.
While we have you, Sheriff, let me ask another question. This is Jeff Brower. We have, we have $35 million to spend. We've got a $20 million deficit, and you have projects that are about $20 million between this and the vehicle operators course. Would you consider using the Speedway, working a deal with the Speedway for a vehicle operators course?
Mr. Chairman, I think is an outstanding idea. I think that would, what a draw, number one, for potential recruits that come into our county to say, hey, you're going to train out of the Speedway. And I think it will be a tremendous partnership. I don't talk to the county manager. We could reduce probably 75% of our cost on that track. It'd be reduced by partnering with the Speedway. I think that's fantastic.
So that's what I'm wondering, Sheriff. So what would the monetary value of that track be then? Because you said it could greatly reduce.
Well, I think that from talking to the county manager and George, please don't hesitate to jump in here if I screw up the numbers, but just using the theoretical number of 15 million, George seems to think that we could partner with the Speedway and do it for maybe 5 million or less.
Or less. I took the initiative to speak to the Speedway and have some conversation started. There would be some costs because there are requirements that we would have to have, obviously, that may not be there. So my suggestion, we could go back and look at maybe what somebody, mainly would surround some electronics and maybe some sort of a viewing area. We'll have to figure out, again, they were a little busy, and this is their season. So it was something that we agreed to talk about after they get through the race, but they were excited about it. And in fact, they do it in other, it's done in other areas of other tracks. So there would probably be some costs, probably in the, and again, this is very preliminary, you know, you would need to probably bring two or three million dollars to them and partner with them. So that's what I was getting ready actually to say a few minutes ago, is I think this is the area where you can find some of the seed money here, would be letting us just set aside some money for the track, and then whatever you guys decide here for the seed money for this program.
When you talked to those other areas, was it more of a fixed track or was it something, just an area that they had where they're setting it up every time?
I don't know. I just, you know, didn't get that far. It has been all high-level discussions with the upper people of Speedway, and they would have to give their folks. So very conceptual. But the issue really was what, why, people had asked, well, why is it 15 million dollars? The particular land set aside for this out there happens to be some pretty low land and would require a lot of fill and a lot of other things, and make it particularly expensive. So that's why we started thinking of where else could you do something like that? And of course, an existing track with a lot of asphalt and a lot of already down would seem to be a logical place to go and see if we could partner. And again, no illusion, it's not set up necessarily for right now, but on that whole complex, I think there could be some partnership opportunities.
I don't want to run it as a caution at this time. We say set by, set by meaning that the county holds on to, and we negotiate and see what we can do about that over there. It shouldn't cost that much money, but we'll have the money set aside because if nothing else, you're going to have to take and pay them something.
Exactly.
And if you do, if you do end up using the Speedway, there's a good chance, of course, they got buildings, or he might have to make some kind of a office trailer or something to bring in and out of there. I don't think we're spending 5 million, but let's just take, put that aside right now that the county holds on to. Now we're back on the Jack, and that's done, Mike?
I'm sorry, Ben, I caught half of, I caught half of what you were saying.
I said, let's take and set 5 million dollars aside the county's holding on to. In reference to the track, it shouldn't cost near that much money, but we hang on to that money until we see what it costs, just as an abundance of caution. Now that's out of the way. Now we're back to the Jack.
I think that's, that's, that's perfect, Ben. Thank you so much.
That's good.
So my question on that one.
I do believe though that Speedway is, if, that is going to be one heck of a partnership. And like I said, from a recruiting perspective and from a partnership perspective, that's something that is really, it bought a lot of people's socks off when they see we can pull that off.
Mike? Mike?
Yeah.
Hey, Mike, can you come back up?
Yes, sir.
What's the chances? We talked about and tried to work with the state years ago about a Jack, which is a very good thing. And we just, at the time, they were playing games. And you start trying to get Senator Wright and some of them to start pressing some arms because this is going to be a monumental cost that's going to end up in all of our laps. Down the road, you're going to be looking at the county and trying to figure out how to make ends meet, and it may come out of the other end, and they need to take and step up to the plate, and they have not done that in the past. And they need to start thinking about that along with the cities to help it out because otherwise, we're going to have a bottomless pit, once again, like the homeless shelter. We need pressure put on all of our, all those other players. Amen.
Exactly right, Ben. You make great points. I could tell you that Senator Wright has been with us from the very beginning. He actually is the one who got the head of DJJ down to Volusia County to sit at the thought, which got us DCF to put this pilot program in place. He's negotiating with Rhonda about the, where footage price, I won't get into that. But he is really at the forefront in helping us at Tallahassee and hopefully the rest of our legislative delegation jumps on board.
I still have a question in regards to the, so the actual operators course. So we just talked about setting aside 5 million and the county keeping it in our funds and then working on trying, yeah, that's what I just said, that you, that we just said that, so. But that, in trying to get it cheaper, so say, so now the county is setting aside in our funds, 5 million, not going to the sheriff's office funds, and then it ends up being cheaper, so it ends up being 3 million or 2.5, what happens to the other 2.5? Does it just stay in our general fund or for us to use?
We would, we could come back to you, we would come back, because what we're trying to do is establish that list, all these are estimates. So you're going to have some of that occurring. And we would come back to you and say, do you want to put it on what other XYZ project is available? And you might find that, again, I will say, you know, we really don't know on this Jack. We think it's in the neighborhood of what Ryan has put out here. But I would leave the money available probably for that as well, because we just don't know where that cost is going to go. And hopefully we will get state money. Fifty, over 50% of these centers are run right now by DJJ. So, and I see that, you know, by the presentation, they are coming over and bringing an intake portion of it and moving it in there. But I think we would really deserve probably more than that down the road. So this is a case where I think local government is taking a lead role in a problem, and we should be commended for that. But we also, it's really been a state responsibility, and we need to keep that pressure on as we go forward.
And George, if I could jump in there, we, we had a really good meeting with the new secretary of DJJ. He is extremely interested in what we're doing. He even allowed us to take over the ankle monitoring for the entire county now. We, the Volusia County Sheriff's Office, will be in charge after hours if it cuts his ankle monitor off, if, you know, violates his terms, and be able to instantly go pick that kid up. And we'll be probably one of the, one of the few sheriff's offices in state that are doing that, and he did that with a stroke of the pen, as we.
I'll make a motion that we fund it, and in the process, and in the process, that we have our partners work trying to take and cut the corners where we can and, you know, to get the other agencies to step up to the plate.
A second.
So I actually have a suggestion for adding some funds in perhaps. So we, on the list as well, we have, it's listed as D11 on the potential projects, right under the Sheriff's Operators Course, but that's the domestic violence programs. And we all know that because of COVID and just in general, even before COVID, our domestic violence numbers have been pretty large. We have someone here to give a presentation. But that's one thing I didn't see was actually pulling in the Beacon Center and that side of the system, because they're dealing with the foster children, they're dealing with the school kids, they're dealing with DCF, they're dealing with everyone. And it seems to me like they should be a really integral part of the Jack system as well. And so if we are looking at giving funding to both, perhaps we can sort of combine some Well, are we, are we, I didn't know we were approving each thing right now, but no, yes.
I don't think we are. I was going to suggest, actually Danny started, I was going to say a few minutes ago, you know, I think we're doing a great job of discussing this, and we know that it seems to be consensus that there's going to be some support for this. But my suggestion is we probably ought to, let's go ahead and finish the presentations because you have someone here who's going to present on domestic violence, and we also have the property appraiser waiting and his folks to present. Then you'll have the totality of the list. We know what the deficit is. We know we have, because we have the sheriff here, he's going to work with us, that's going to take, yeah, 10 million off of that. So you're getting a little closer. And so let's do it in a more holistic fashion. And that's really, at the end of the day, is try to get that list so you know what each of them are and what the projects will be on them, not actually starting the project or anything. Because we'll come back to you whenever there's an expense and the, you know, starting those projects, so.
Well, so her, her presentation is very different, so it's more court-related, but I just wanted to ensure and make sure that all the parties in the room and sheriff online, that everybody remembers. And I'm very certain that the Beacon Center would be willing to partner in some way with the Jack, and that would be a very valid idea. So I just wanted to make sure that that suggestion is heard.
What, why don't, how many presentations are we left?
You have left right now, you have the property appraisers on this, and then my understanding is that there may be a short one from domestic violence.
Okay. Which, thank you. Ben withdraws his motion, which makes sense until we get to the, to the end, and Barb's going to put it back on.
So two questions. One is, do we have a presentation from Corrections to know what's part of that 10 million?
We don't have a presentation. We've talked about it before with budget, and we can talk to Mark, who's here. He has an allocation, we have an allocation request in there, 10 million dollars. There are two projects out there that will far exceed the 10 million dollars, so we're just hoping that if we can get one of them funded through this process. There was the mental health step-down dorm, which is basically, we'd be taking another one of the buildings that we have. We already have dorms out there, be using that design and building another one. And then I think it was also the medical, they wanted to move the medical area into a, right now, an area that's currently a courtyard, and they would fill that in and expand their medical area. Those are the projects that are out there.
And the other question, I thought we didn't take action in the workshop.
Well, that's why we're taking, basically building a list. But this is different in the fact that this is a continuation of the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a final, yes, Chair and I were talking, it's not a final decision to say, but if you're going to make a motion to give direction to staff to reorient this list, we could open it up for public input, but ultimately, it's not a final decision to be making to that.
But we can't make a motion and hold on?
I think your staff's looking for direction on how to develop these priorities. If you do take a vote, we just need to open up public input. But I know, George, I talked, we weren't anticipating any final direction, because your staff's just asking for some direction in developing this list for you.
Is Larry here? I don't see, are there, no?
His office is here.
Can you tell us who you are?
Yeah. Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Kenny Ruger. I work for the Volusia County Property Appraisers Office. Thank you for hearing our request. The reengineering of our Volusia County GIS parcel map would allow us to provide a better, more accurate depiction, along with better data to enhance all aspects of Volusia County's workflow. There's not a division within our county government that does not utilize this information, as well as depend on the data provided within our map. If you go to the next slide, if I can get to it there. The Volusia County Building Department, Planners on Land Development, Zoning Department, Staff Environmental, the Fire Services, Sheriff's Department, Public Works, Right-Away Department, Legal Staff, Tax Collector's Office, Community Development, Facilities, Elections, Health Departments, all use our map for their information. For Department of Health, the St. John's River Water Management, all 16 cities, for Department of Transportation, Florida Aviation Authority, damage assessment for female and emergency operations, county residents. The list can go on and on. I can emphasize the importance of the value this information attributes to the operation of your employees. Next map, please. Currently, our map was constructed around 1988, okay? They use a digitizing process. This process was great at the time, but as, you know, time goes by, things start getting improvements, but we didn't improve our map. We tried to do our best to maintain it, we tried to do everything that we can. The problem is we don't have enough staff, and we don't have enough time. Y'all have heard that many, many times. It's always going to be that way. If you go to the next slide, please. On this slide, you'll see an example of the digitizing, okay? The lines are waving, the map property lines are encroaching in the neighbors' yards and sometimes are drawn over residences. This causes a lot of confusion and headaches for all departments trying to work on their projects. Their project is only as accurate as the data they can use. If you go to the next slide, Ryan. This next slide is an example of using the coordinate geometry COGO. This process allows the map to be drawn based on actual plans, take the plaits, the deeds, the actual documents. We draw all the parcels as accurately as we can, and in this process, a consultant would construct the map in professional, accurate, and timely fashion. As you can see on this slide, the parcel lines are very accurate, fence lines are matching the parcel lines, there's no lines over the top of a house, okay? And it gives the planners, engineers, assessors the tools they need to aid in accuracy. This even helps you, the council, to see an accurate depiction when a county resident asks you to settle a dispute with a neighbor. Benefits to all, not just one. We know you have a lot of projects to consider, and I wouldn't want to be in your shoes. As we move into the future, we are compelled to update our map for upcoming submittals to the Department of Revenue. The ARPA funding gives us the opportunity to complete this project without impacting our annual budget. That's a win-win for the taxpayers and the county. I ask you as a council to allow us the opportunity to invest in a project that will not only benefit the assessment process, but also give a leg up to the rest of the county staff, along with our constituents in the municipalities, the ability to work with accurate data to form job duties to the best of their abilities. Thank you for your time and look forward to working with you. Happy to answer any questions.
Dan Johnson.
This is really a no-brainer, because the Department of Revenue is going to mandate we do this in the future, and if we do it now, we can pay for it with this money instead of later having to use our... And if we do it now, we can pay for it with this money instead of later having to use our, going to our general fund. Also, at the moment, it's Brevard County that we can partner with to save some more money on it. So, I just think that, it, let's see, it's a no-brainer that we take care of this right now.
I agree with that, Ben. It was a late entry, but it's one that is inevitable. You're gonna have to do it. The state's gonna mandate it. And this, it's still taxpayer money, but instead of just being Volusia County taxpayer money, it's the whole U.S., so I think it was a good addition to put on here. I know I use this all the time as a county councilman and as private citizen, and in our business, we use it. So, anyway. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
So, we were quoted with Brevard County, okay? This is not 2.2 for Brevard and us. They were also somewhere in that neighborhood. They have a, close to the parcel size. The idea came about with the way our parcel lines are not gelling together across county lines, and we have the space industry, we have Miami Track, or Miami Corporation is getting ready to cross both lines, you know, and we noticed that with this, the Department of Revenue has asked us to go around to the counties and make our map match theirs. That takes a lot of money. We have a lot of rivers, we have a lot of things. So, the 2.2 million is the high estimate. It was between 1.9 and 2.2. The one thing is, it's based on parcel count, okay? And what we don't understand, and what we don't pay attention to is, is that right now, we're at 299,248 parcels, and that was as of today. But I have 32 preliminary subdivisions between all the cities that are going in. We have 72 splits and 90 combinations that the county themselves has done this year so far, from the beginning of the year, and all that parcel count keeps going up. Right now, I think our estimate is basically about $6 a parcel. And for them to, that's pretty cheap, considering they're gonna sit there and they're gonna actually use the legal to go. But the more parcels we get, eventually, the higher cost this is gonna take.
We saved your job, right?
Yeah. All right, thanks, Joe.
Is there one more? Wasn't there another presentation? You have one more presentation?
Yeah, my understanding is, there's a person here from the domestic violence that wanted to speak.
Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'll just bend it down like this, so as long as it stays, we're good. Good afternoon. Thank you for having me here again to speak briefly. I spoke with you all back in August, I believe it was, in regards to a program that would assist with the court side of domestic violence. And I pulled the numbers today just before I came here, and it looks like that we are on track to almost double the amount of people that we saw in outreach last year. And I would like to say that 2020, obviously, was an unusual year, and it took a little while for the numbers to get up. And while Volusia County has stayed in the top 10 in the state for incidents of domestic violence, our rate's extremely high in comparison to the average. We did see a little drop in reporting of domestic violence in 2020, which is not surprising to DV experts, because everybody was at home together, and unfortunately, survivors were unable to reach out for help at the same, you know, rate that they could before. But what was very concerning to me about those numbers was that although the reporting was lower, sexual assaults in intimate partner relationships doubled in 2020. This is seen as a pre-incident indicator to domestic homicide. So, when we see sexual assaults go up in intimate relationships, we also see an increase in domestic homicide. I don't know what those numbers are for 2021 yet, but our cases that we're seeing in shelter, while they may not be seen by the court or by law enforcement, have been much more severe. While we saw a small decrease in reporting, we saw an increase in the level of violence towards women and children in this past year. And so we continue to see a rise coming into our shelters. We are working on renovating. We will be opening 20 more beds, hopefully, in the next few months. So, I know that our numbers in our shelter facility are actually gonna continue to increase. We have started some preliminary work with the court and met with Chief Judge. We were able to go ahead and eliminate one particularly bad practice that had been occurring here in Volusia County for many years. We're victims of domestic violence. We're getting a phone call the morning after the incident or within hours of the incident, asking them if they wanted to pursue prosecution and if they wanted to have contact with the perpetrator. This kind of pressure placed on a person who's just experienced significant trauma is dangerous. And luckily, with our help from Chief Judge Clayton, that practice is being eliminated. But what we were hoping to do with this program is to really spend some time to look at the practices, focus on the perpetrator accountability. If we, our systems are very focused on the victim of this crime, which we should be focused on safety, but we also have to be focused on justice. Because if we're not addressing the perpetrators and the needs of those individuals, we're seeing perpetrators that are not in jail, who are committing acts of violence against multiple victims. So, I can get a survivor away from a potentially dangerous perpetrator, but that perpetrator is free to seek another victim. And there are children in these homes, there are children being put at risk. These children are at risk of being removed from their mothers sometimes, who haven't committed any acts of violence or neglect against them, who have simply been victimized by a crime. We are seeing still about a 54% ROR in these cases. And because of some of the advocacy work that we've done, I believe is the direct result of us seeing some reduction in perpetrators being allowed to go directly back into the home. What was happening here at about a 60% rate was perpetrators were being arrested, and within hours, they were being released at first appearance with no orders prohibiting their contact with the victim. So, now we're starting to see that drop down a little bit. We've had a lot of conversation about it. And that number right now is at about 34% for this fiscal year, which started in January. An additional piece of this is that the Department of Children and Families has just been really legislated, I guess, is a lack of a better word, to recertify battery intervention programs throughout the state. Those have not been certified for over 10 years, and when that happened, when that certification was taken away, we saw a tremendous decrease in services to deal with perpetrator accountability. There was nobody managing those programs. So, anybody could start a batterer's intervention program, including a batterer who had a license to do therapy, and start a class for other batterers. And so what we saw was moral increases in violence, because there's no treatment. The department now has to recertify these programs. We do not have the infrastructure here to find the right people, the right programs, and make sure that we have quality services dealing with perpetrator behavior so we can protect future victims and protect their children here in Volusia County. So, that is a large piece of this, for us to really look at that, look at the trends, find out where the gaps are, do a needs assessment in this community, hear from providers, and say, what do we need to have in place to focus on perpetrator accountability? In addition, I speak a lot to the state attorney and his staff, who believes that the juries need to be educated, they have challenges in prosecuting these cases. Prosecution rates don't seem to be going up. In part, they believe it's a lack of education. And I think that we have to educate the community about perpetrator behavior. We tend to talk about domestic violence from the victim perspective of safety, but if we only talk about crimes from the perspective of the victim, we're not gonna solve the crime. We have to look at the perpetrator of these crimes, the acts they're committing, and the accountability that this community expects when somebody commits this kind of act of violence against their family member or their child. So, what we're proposing is to develop that piece of the county and the court and the education of the community that would help increase some accountability here, and we could see some decrease in homicide in Volusia County, as well as incidents of intimate partner violence.
Would you please state your name and who you represent for the record?
So sorry. Angela Pa, and I'm the CEO with Beacon Center, which is the only certified domestic violence center serving all of Volusia County.
Thank you. Any questions for her? Thank you very much. Okay.
There was one update. While we are here, my understanding is the school board sent a message. Janine? This is about broadband.
Janine? Janine Jennings Business Services, yeah, I got a, not even an hour ago, I guess, I got a message from their CFO, Lisa Sneed, saying, "At this time, the school board does not have $2 million to allocate to this project. This is a priority, but our current ESER funding isn't available. We hope that we will receive some additional funds or federal and DOE grants still interested in partnership when our budget allows."
Funds at all? Did they get any monies? Do we know that? I would imagine, I think they did, by the way.
They did.
So, I was just pointing out that they did. Yeah. Okay.
The, I'm gonna turn this over to Ryan for a second. He needs to really take from this some good information. We can't just, we can't just continue it. So, he needs some decisions made. We've got a couple of lists, A and B, if you look at those lists, and then the C and D list, he'll be talking about those. The A and B, we ought to be able to get through, we don't have that much of a deficit, and then we can spend whatever time we need on C and D. But Ryan, you wanna elaborate on that a little bit more?
Sure. What I have on this slide is what the deficits were when I published the list, although based off of the track discussion, that's already outdated. The order I have them listed is List A and C, and then List B and D. And the reason for that is, List A is the projects that were previously identified on the separate budget resolution that council approved in July. There's been a lot of discussion on those projects. Those were the projects that were previously reported to the Treasury. There's really not anything new on that list. There are some grants that are pending, the state water grants for the southeast and southwest water facilities. If we can bring those forward at the next council meeting, those projects on List A, and get an official, final commitment on List A, so that those grants can be processed, so that the state knows that we have the funding locked down, that would be what I'm looking for, is direction that we could bring List A back. And because we've talked about it so much here, I know that normally, a project list that's $30 million, what List A is, would not go on consent. But because we've talked about it here, and it's just a formality for the workshop, that I would add it to the consent agenda for the next meeting, List A. List C are the two projects that there were previous strong, what I believe to be strong council commitments to. Those are revenue loss, that was just the Clyde Morris Landings Housing and the Marine Science Center that was done at the budget workshop. I would be looking for a similar direction on List C. Those lists have had more discussion than B and D. So, that would be the first thing. And then we could potentially, this is all up to, if you guys think this is a good way to handle it, then we could move to List B for direction, modification, or any additions, if there's additions, as I've got listed on the slide. Although additions would just be swaps at this point, really. And then finally, List D, being that's where the largest deficit would be.
So, are you...
Go ahead.
So, are you wanting us to go through each list and pretty much say, let's move forward? Because I'm gonna say, move forward definitely with List C, the two items. Is that what you're kinda asking? Just my opinion.
Just looking for the direction that we can bring it forward next council meeting, and that we've had appropriate discussion here, that we'll put it on the consent.
Let me, let me do one other housekeeping thing.
Yeah, I do want to ask one of...
Before we discuss all these, does anybody from the public, did anybody from the public want to speak on any of these? State your name, rank.
No, just quickly on this, I'm asking you to do it countywide. At least be cognizant of the fact that everybody gets something. The little things pass all of them. $5,000, $50,000, that's pennies, all right? Never short anybody. If the JAC Center needs X amount of dollars, it's a savings to us in the long run. Give whoever these people need what they need. Because if you just save $10,000, or $10 million with the track, possibly 15, you can do that elsewhere. So, please, all the little stuff, get it out of the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Bill.
And so my other question was, on the list A, A1, I'm just going down by your cheat sheet.
Yep.
Is there any bend to that? That's remaining COVID expenses such as testing at $22,500. I mean, is that known facts?
It's an estimate based off of the trend for similar expenses that were expensed under the Coronavirus Relief Fund, which was the CARES Act funding.
So, the answer is, yes, we could shave some off if we need to. And then also, I had a question about the Library Social Worker Program. You know, we're talking about the juvenile, it just seems like there's maybe some redundancy there. I don't know if anybody wants to speak to that, that ask for $480,000.
I agree. I think that we could forego that and really put some monies into some of these other services at this time.
We've got mental health, we've got alcohol, we've got the juvenile center.
It's not that it's not needed, it's just...
Say the JAC.
Yeah.
The JAC Center would be, I would put that above.
You have a question in your eyes. Well, that's all I could see.
You're right, because I guess the library program, its community service, it's programming to keep people from getting to that level, right? So, but if we've got, if we have to sacrifice somewhere, and that's how, you know, the majority chooses to address it, but...
It just seems like we have a lot of counseling services available in other areas.
Why you have a lot? Because you have a lot of need, and you have a lot of need in different places. So, the families that are at a library aren't at the juvenile justice system, right? So, if they're at the library, they can give the services that are needed to keep them, you know, connected to positive resources, you have a much better chance of keeping them out of that system. So, I mean, you know, I see things a little differently. So, that's just my perspective on it is prevent, preventing before, you know, having to treat people who are getting vagor acted and so forth. You're investing in those resources, and if they're at the library, that's a good place to get your services. And it's also that those caseworkers are working with the family. So, they're also helping them access resources within their community, so.
But is this program, was, this was actually appointing X amount of people, right? If I remember what was included in that? So, I mean, you know, I don't think you're gonna have somebody in the library eight hours a day filling out social services work. I just, I think maybe if we have resources there to direct them or make an appointment or something like that, rather than have... or something like that, rather than have, having to pay for them.
That was the discussion before, I think we had about the website. So we talk about 2-1-1 all the time that is not adequate at this point. And, you know, if they're at the libraries, they have access to the website. So if we can, if we can just get all of the information in one spot, to have a social worker at that location to be able to tell the different programs, we're going to have to get all of the programs in one spot initially anyway. So why don't we just focus on that, work on that, get that website together, our 2-1-1, and provide that at the library for now to where they'll have the ability to access it. There's people in the library system that actually show people, you know, how to access the computer and how to get on. So if they can, if we can make that website, go ahead, I see Diane to talk about the website.
Well, I, we will certainly abide by the will of council. I will say that the idea of utilizing social workers is the fact that that 2-1-1 system, which we're working hard to get up to speed and in fact, library services will be a key component to keeping it updated. We find many of the clients who need those services, though, don't have the capacity to use the internet and succeed in finding the resources that they need. That's where the social worker, the direct help comes into play. So, you know, there is so much we can rely upon the internet to do. The idea of the social worker program, though, is to help, you know, meet a need beyond that where people really can't just maneuver the internet themselves to get it. The embedded library social worker program actually is a model that's been rolled out nationwide. It made the ARPA regulation specifically, this program by name and craft, because it's had success around the country to help meet the people where they are, I believe a phrase Mrs. Gertman uses a lot. Nonetheless, there's a lot of competing important needs and we do recognize that. So it's council decision on where you all think those monies would make the most difference in the community.
And we spoke a lot this morning on, when we were talking about homelessness, we talked about all of the different agencies that are helping that. So, you know, I mentioned Derbyshire Place, but all of these different churches and people that are reaching out for various community needs, those, you know, if we can create that website and we can create that access point to where all of the information is in one spot, then I think that would be a hell of a lot cheaper at this point to start that base and then to work with those community partners. I mean, why not work with them? They are in the community, you know, you want to hit it where the people are and those really are where a lot of those people are. They're not all necessarily at the library, so.
And again, making an appointment, you know, maybe Tuesdays and Fridays or Tuesdays, they're going to have services in there for anybody who needs.
And I think a lot of those agencies would be extremely excited to have the ability to point them in that direction because it actually, you know, three for one dividends, it would, those people would end up coming back less because then they're being helped. So perhaps that's a way to target that.
It's one of those for me that I think, as Suzanne said, the reason that program is targeted and supported and recommended is because it's had success and it's creating a model that you can duplicate in other ways throughout the community. So if that's what the majority of the council decides, but I certainly think that it has value and there's a reason that it's being recommended.
So Ryan, can we knock off 480,000 off of the 2,500?
The remaining COVID expenses at 2.5 million was just an estimate. I do have a.
Yeah. Let me weigh it in here. The, you're only short on the, on the direct eligible projects by 2.3 million. So looking down through on that page, the, we have a couple of different choices, but the Stormwater Project, Lighthouse Cove Stormwater Treatment Facility, we could drop that off and pay with stormwater utility fees. It's the lowest ranked of the stormwater. They're in an order of importance. That gets you now 700,000 or 600 and some odd thousand dollars to the good. So we would be good with List A right now and we could get that locked down so that Mike can get his grants at the next meeting.
You should have started with that.
But that's something that's going to have to come out of the general fund, right? That stormwater.
No, it would come out of the stormwater utility. Ben can speak to this.
Do you need a motion on that?
We will in a second.
Hang on, we haven't established.
Ben Barlet, Public Works Director. So the Lighthouse Cove project was one of the projects identified in the Mosquito Lagoon RAP for further out. We're in the process of doing the boarding, aerials onboard. It's one of those projects, we're going to need to purchase some land. Because it's a RAP project and it was kind of programmed further on out, I feel fairly confident, we've been very good at getting grant money for these types of projects, 60% grant funded from Water Management District and DEP. I'm a little nervous on this project from, because it's direct funded, you're bound by the timeframe associated with ARPA. So there's some, you know, this is a project, when we did the RAP, we identified it as a possible project, but further on out, because there's some things that require some lead time associated with it.
Buying property takes time.
Correct.
So that's why, I think this is a good one because.
That's B-19?
Yes.
Okay.
Question on A1, though?
We sort of breezed over, but the remaining COVID expenses, did I hear somebody say before that we were spending some of that money on flooring? Did I hear, did you say that at the beginning? Something about the library?
UV, the UV disinfection in the air handlers.
Air handlers at the library?
Yeah, the UV disinfection lights in the air handlers.
Okay.
14 libraries and the Library Support Services Center. That project is in that, that would be what we call the remaining COVID expenses, because that's a facilities disinfection, it's a category A type. Basically, that remaining COVID-19 expenses was the types of expenses we previously submitted to the Coronavirus Relief Fund. That's what that was meant to be and that was a project. UV disinfection was something that we did in many buildings. The libraries just took a little longer to get to. I think there was a supply issue.
Let me ask you, go ahead, Janine.
Well, I see B-20, the stormwater runoff system. This morning, we approved that where we're selling the gas for, what, a buck 75? Do we have any idea of what money we're going to be making? Can that project that we just approved this morning for that, can that pay for some, or take that off our?
Well, that's a, the issue here with that is, this is, we're not, we'll make money off of that, but nowhere near enough to pay for this. That particular, this won't even cover that whole project. It was just trying to defray some of the costs so we have a good chance of keeping our landfill fees down. So otherwise, they'll be paying more for tipping fees, which everybody in the county pays. They just pay it through their garbage hauler who has to dispose.
That was the next thing I was going to get to is, I know there was talks about the shingle tipping fees coming up to bar.
Right.
Can that, what I'm trying to do is free up that 7 million. Have we got a figure on the, on what that would be on the shingles tipping fees?
I don't right now, but just so you know, that number was $14 million a week ago. So we're only paying for half of that project is what we're proposing and the other half will try to pay through things like you're talking about, revenues at the landfill.
But a quick, a quick way, George, to get a quick number on that is the total amount of tons that we're getting in for the shingles, if we're charging half price for them compared to every other Class III, we just double it and we'll have ourselves a rough number.
Again, that's a, we can do stuff like that, but that's several meetings and not oppose that, but you don't need to do that. If you drop off the Lighthouse Cove Stormwater Facility, you're there. You're done.
I was just trying to keep that project.
Right. I understand, but I honestly feel that we have a better chance of funding that through grants, especially the way we are getting them now, than I do the landfill issue. So I'd save that problem for, we'll fix, because we will, we'll do the things you're talking about. And then if we have money left over, great, then we can spend it on another stormwater project, so.
You're more concerned with that one because of time also?
Yeah, time is probably the biggest enemy on that. If you're going to buy property and there's any delay or anything, that could be, it could be a big problem.
Yeah, I see what Danny's thinking and I agree, that all these stormwater projects, I was really pleased to see them on here because it's one of the biggest contributors to water pollution and this is a good way to get them done. I was going to say, take a small percentage from each one of them, but if you're, you know, if you're confident that you can take that one off and, okay.
Hey, that's good.
Does that mean Barb gets her library social worker?
It does.
Well, thank you for that. So I'll take your library and give you a road for 7.5 million.
Now, now back to Fred's question, do you need a motion for that?
One last question.
Are we just giving Ryan direction?
If you're, you're just giving a distraction. If you're comfortable with consensus.
One last question on the two.
We'll bring back.
We'll bring it back to the next meeting, though, because what will happen at the next meeting, we will have to at that time agree on these projects in List A because they are tied to the grants that will also be bringing to the same meeting. So you have to have that locked down for Mike to put in for the grant. And those are big grants. Those are, you know, you're talking about big multipliers. So, so that's why that's important on the, on that. So just, I don't want anyone to be surprised in the next meeting, no, this is List A and everything we have taken care of. So we're really good now on the direct expenditure, as long as you also are good with List C, which you said.
Before we move on to C, I still had a question about A and B. So I'm just looking, so this means that we're leaving a reserve on the table, am I correct? In 5,700, then?
I hope so.
Yes. If there's a surplus, that would just be added to the reserve line.
Okay.
Any other questions on this? And it sounds like we have an agreement on A and B. What about C? I think we, yeah, I think those are keepers. Okay.
Now to the big ones.
Now to the, but you've already saved, shaved, did you adjust the numbers yet, Ryan? Did you take 10 million off of the 20 deficit?
I haven't done it in a spreadsheet, but I can do that math.
Yeah, and actually, you're correct. I think if we're taking the 10 off and then we have a couple of projects to talk about, but you've got a little ways to go.
Right.
So could we use some of that portion of the A3, the mental health substance abuse projects for stuff on D? No.
No, and one issue we do have is that.
It was just very blanketed. We just, it's literally anything having to do with mental health and we, for 1.8 million, I mean, how?
It's, that would be council discretion.
Yeah, it's not targeted, it's just anything relative to mental health or substance abuse, so it's.
Do you remember what I had, what I mentioned before? In the amount of funds that have continued to come in above the general fund, if you divert part of the 1.8 million, you might end up having to, if, you might end up having to make the choice of, in a future year, if the general fund allocation is still less than what your social service agencies request during the annual ADM funding, if the funding is not here, then it's either not anywhere, a denial, or coming from the general fund.
So this is basically, this is another reserves then, basically, is what we're saying. We're holding it for future use for something.
Yes, and part of the UCF study was, you know, theoretically going to help us identify where the gaps in mental health were beyond where we are funding them with the ADM annual expenses, although Ryan brings up, you know, an excellent point, which is you have been overfunding those on a regular basis for the last two years, so that would probably be the other draw for it.
And this has to be spent within?
Yes, my question.
2024?
Anything on List A or B, the directly eligible projects, have to be committed, obligated is the term they officially use, by 2024, and completed by 2026. So for your stormwater projects, what that means is PO is issued to your construction contractor by the end of 2024, but they let you get the job done and do the final payments until 2026.
So this is basically 7,500, give or take a couple hundred, that we're leaving on the table to be spent in the next two years? From some mental health substance abuse projects, which could be anything, 1.8, the reserve of 5 million and then the 700,000 we saved on the Lighthouse Cove. So that's 7.5 million we're leaving, just on the county side to.
If you're referring to the 1.8 million that's listed for mental health projects as a reserve for future mental health, as opposed to just calling it mental health and you add it all together, that would be the sum.
So yes, okay.
Suzanne, if I could just ask one thing? Is the 4 million on the housing repair program, is that going to get all of the people that have been waiting in line? That's going to get, that's going to be ample to get them all cleared up and so we can start a new list of those that are waiting?
We believe the answer to that is yes, and if it is short, we think we do have this year's allocation of those funds from the federal and state to make up that difference so that we can wipe those lists clean and be able to reopen that portal.
Wonderful. That would be wonderful.
Much needed. I just think as council, we need to be, we need to remember that we still have the 7.5 somewhere.
I bet Ryan won't let us forget it.
I think it's a, that it's very possible that if the remaining COVID expenses are low, right now, we're being subsidized in PPE by FEMA. There's FEMA COVID funding available. That FEMA COVID funding, the project eligibility deadline was September 30th, 2021. You still have an EMS division that uses PPE. It's an eligible expenditure under this fund. So when I've got the two and a half million, part of, there will be an increased use of that line for PPE and if there's another wave and we end up with more PPE, I could very easily see coming before this council and asking to move part of that reserve to additional COVID-19 expenses. Same thing goes for the medical expense line. It's just an estimate that's listed there right now. We're actually still working with Cigna to fully understand the extent of COVID expenses. What's estimated right now is based off of a report that they gave us, but we're working back and forth to find out what documentation and what claims we can truly claim. That number could go up as well. That's part of why you have a reserve listed there.
That actually may be one of the most significant because we've already seen some big swings as we get that information in. And so we're, we're, we had some people who are very sick, so this is some big bills.
Or A.
As I look at the, the list of the revenue loss items, if you look at, you have land acquisition east of the Ag Center. The Ag Center is going to go through a master plan that we, I think we're working with the University of Florida. That's something that you could look at, take it off for now. You've got the Bee Tree Nursery Feasibility Study, we think there's a grant available that we could, so we could take that to 750,000.
Which one was that?
The Bee Tree Nursery Feasibility Study, we feel like.
D-20.
Yeah. Thank you. That's why we have numbers.
I've got them up on the screen now as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So you have, the one I was looking at for, the. Yeah, that's one that tugs at my heart, but I think that you do have, we don't have enough money right now to pay for that to impact fees. There is a lot of things going to happen around there, so there will be opportunity for proportionate share. But I would say that's probably going to be your next LPGA Williamson-type situation. So that's why it's on there.
Yeah, and the other concern is, you know, with the controversy on the Amazon going in, they are, in fact, I think they're having a meeting tonight, I think that's what Derek Future told me, with the community about that West Gate, which would open up on that. So they are still talking about that, so that would create more traffic in that area also. So just throwing that one out.
I'd like to talk about D19. That's the EMS posting, but that's, we had talked about doing 1.8 to, to actually build new structures and for two, and one of those was actually within the city of Deland. Seems like a large waste of funds to build two new facilities when we're already working to put EMS in different fire facilities and there are places to house them. We just need to, to get that done. It might be some additional funding, certainly, to make some of the existing structures all over the county suitable there. But to actually build brand-new structures within a city, when we have Deland Fire, we have County Fire, we have all of these different buildings, seems, seems to me to be a little frivolous. The, the end game is to get them respite. So I'm wondering if we can reduce that with a much more focused, or even use the 1.8, but with a much more focused idea. I'd love to use the whole 1.8, but it, very focused to, to really work on way more stations to give them respite, rather than building new buildings. That doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me.
Yeah, I, I think we absolutely agree with that, and the idea had been to be more focused to try to get as many multiples of these stations for EMS built as possible. In fact, we've retrofitted a building here on the TCK campus in the annex across the street for EMS. So that may solve one problem right there, where we found room for them with a, you know, modest remodel in an existing structure. So that kind of strategy, I think, will help draw these funds out and give us much more bang for our buck, so to speak, more places for EMS.
So is, is council good with changing that language and us really looking towards, so not, not building new buildings, not building new permanent structures, but providing them respite and making sure that they have those, those facilities wherever they are in conjunction with others? Well, I just want to make sure that that is the direction that we're giving, if that's the direction that we're saying, because before that was not the intent, so, yeah.
Well, yeah, the goal, the goal is to get them, a place to be able to go, but we haven't, we haven't done it. And I, my understanding was, wasn't that we were going to be building expensive places. I, I know staff is looking at a whole array of, from, from manufactured homes, different things that could be, could be used relatively inexpensively. I just, I don't want to do anything to it that it, that it ends it and we go back to wishing we could do it and, and not get it done, so.
We can certainly take the phrase permanent structures off if it's leading anyone to a different conclusion than that, because what I've heard both the chairman and Ms. Post say is exactly consistent with our strategy.
Well, I think the last ARPA workshop we had, we actually talked about two, two physical locations, building two buildings. So, yeah.
That, that was last summer, and since then, as the chairman said, we've been looking at a whole array.
This is just our second ARPA workshop, so we're, we're going based on the ARPA list, so, yeah, I just want to make sure that we are all on the same page.
Yes, ma'am.
I think we need to go through all of these quickly, and I want to ask the council to, to do two, two hard ones first, the late entries, because I, I think we came to consensus with it. The Juvenile Assessment Center, is everybody wanting to see that stay?
Mm-hmm.
Did you want to speak to that, or?
I have, I have a thing.
Uh-oh.
Just when we thought we were making progress.
Well, we are. We are. I have a specialty class, lady, and it is the very most powerful treatment step for. The family has not been a part of, even part of the community, and they're not proud of their work, but not to the point where he invested and then he got a part of that, that's been a dream. And I'm not the one, the resources to then, just to be part of the, the great recreation of the county and that good, and that opportunity.
That statue.
How much?
No, wait a minute.
How much do you need?
Daytona. Let, let me just make, since I'm on that, I'm on that board, and I'm, thank you, Barbara, for bringing that up. I did ask prior, and staff is going to bring it back next month, a next meeting. But let me make, make it, no, and I appreciate that. It, the engraving is not on the statue that's in Washington. It will be on the bronze statue, exactly like the one in Washington, but the bronze statue that will be in Daytona in the new park is where the engraving will be on. So that's still a part of history. It's still a part of history. And, and right now, they've got 25, $100,000 donors, 25,000, 10,000, 5,000, and 1,000 dollar donors that are on there. At this point, they sent me the list to go through them to make sure we've got everybody included, and I realized Volusia County was not on there. I'm on there. I made a contribution. Ormond is on there. Certainly Daytona put in 25,000. I think we definitely need our name on there. This is a big thing for Volusia County. So I, I don't know if we can take that out of the, I don't think we can. Look at this. I see waving.
Well, we, we have an idea.
Well, that would be wonderful.
So now that, now that we know that it would be located here in Volusia County, well, that's, I think, covers a couple of the letters in ECHO, and it could be a direct allocation out of, out of ECHO.
Well, they can't wait for the next hearing with ECHO because they need the names, they need the verification because they're ready to take it to the engraver now. And like I said, I just didn't even realize that our name was not on there.
They would have to go to the next meeting, but.
Well, yes, it could wait till the next meeting, but I'm saying, I'm saying not the next ECHO meeting.
Well, we'd have to take it to the ECHO committee, get their recommendation, and bring it back to you.
When's the next scheduled meeting?
Is it engraving 25,000?
When's the next scheduled?
It's for the contributions for the entire bill, making of the statue itself, bringing it over from Italy, doing the replica and everything, and it's all those who have supported it. Volusia County should be on the list.
So we're still just talking about a total of 25,000? Okay.
I thought you were adding on to her add-on.
No.
See, that was, Donna's going to talk to us. That's one of the beauties of setting aside 5 million for future needs, and I think it's swelled to 7 million now, so. Well, and it's important. She was, go ahead.
So your recent changes for ECHO do require a review by the ECHO advisory board. We're happy to call a special meeting if this is important, then they can make the recommendation to you all, and you can use a direct allocation method to fund the project.
Tomorrow.
It'll, it'll be challenging, but I think Brad is, will they have to know by tomorrow?
No, I have to give them a guess that we are going to do something. So they just need to know where it's going to be, down to the bottom of this, with the foliage, or on the top with the green.
Could we call a ECHO meeting?
We can call a special ECHO meeting for the sole purpose to discuss that issue, and we'll try and do that before the 15th. It'll be a little challenging, but we'll do our best.
And bring an agenda item to you for February 15.
We'll be walking that agenda item on.
So I will let them know that that's potentially going to happen.
Who's, yeah, who's going to pitch it, and are they a good salesman?
I think Ms. Gertman agreed to go to.
I could, I could probably easily, if she's not already committed, I could get Nancy Lowman to come in, and nobody will say no to her.
Can she chip in 25,000?
She's, she was much more than that, hundreds of thousands. Yeah.
She didn't include us?
She, she included her family.
Okay, thank you. Is the feeling right now that D22, the, the juvenile, is, is going to remain at that level? Looks, I've seen, what about the property appraisers' request? Okay. So let's, we're going to keep those two, Ryan, 22 and 23. Let's go into.
The property appraiser in here, we can mess with him.
Let's, um.
They should have stuck around, too, man.
Let's go to the top and just real quick go through some of these, D1, Small Business Recovery Resource, what's everybody's feeling?
For small business, we definitely need, yeah.
I've, yeah, I, I think they've, they, small businesses in Volusia County suffered through COVID, especially in hospitality. So that's a drop in the bucket for them. D2.
I'm a yes.
I'm a yes. You're a yes. Veterans Homeless Shelter.
Is that our, that's our park, right?
This is, they, they got a grant, they had, had us commit against, not a sure, but they had to have us.
The, on the swing, on the swing set.
I think, go ahead.
We actually have it listed on the very detailed list. I know it's not as easy as the cheat sheet. But the swing set was a potential to half-fund with ECHO because, you know, it's a 50%. So, yes, it could be ECHO eligible, the swings. No, it's only, but it would only be half. The ECHO doesn't fund the whole set.
So we'll keep 12, 13,000. If that's the consensus?
Could we, could we?
If we could probably hit, look at some bigger ones.
Yeah, that's not going to do anything.
Yeah, right, that's a rounding error somewhere in here.
Since we're each talking about specifics and could, could we add in there to give like 5,000 to Derbyshire Place? They have their STEM program, they work with Emory Riddle, they do afternoon programs, they do food things with HOM. They do all kinds of things. They have a community garden, and they are zero-funded by anyone. Yep.
We, we got to get rid of 10 million dollars.
Yeah, we're going to.
All of them keep adding. Let's add that to the list of.
Can we put that on the list?
Yeah, we've got.
Can we put it on the list? Well, we also have 70,000 or 7 million.
Right.
Mr. Chair.
Pardon me? Ryan, Mike has a correction on what I just said about that.
I don't want to speak over you. Go ahead. That was Ryan's microphone.
Is that me? Hello? Testing, testing. But I thought we, we had, we had cut 10 million from the sheriff's vehicle course.
We did.
We cut Williamson at 7.5 million.
I didn't know we cut that yet.
Oh, we didn't? Oh, my bad.
We're still holding out hope over this.
Oh, you were holding out hope. See, oh, okay. Okay, all right, all right. And then I thought D20 and D9 we were, we were cutting, so I thought we were already at 20 million.
You thought we were cutting D20?
Yes, D9, D10.
Isn't that what you talked about, George?
We reduced the 5 million.
To 750,000, which is a tremendous reduction.
Okay, let's be more organized. I'm going to go back to where we were at D2. We're keeping that one. We got to the swing set and then we went haywire.
Yes, yes, sir, and that, if it's okay.
That's what you wanted to say.
Well, we can look at, if, if it's council's pleasure, Mariners Cove Park Swing Set. You could look to see if that could be a direct expenditure for ECHO as well.
Direct or half?
If it's a direct expenditure, it wouldn't require the matches, is what I was just.
So it would still be half?
We need to.
You wouldn't need the half then?
Be the full 25, if you, we wouldn't need a match.
Guys, we're playing with pennies when we need to be dealing with 20 dollar bills here.
Well, we're going down the list.
They're going to add up, though. Okay, so I'm taking that off the list, right?
Mariners Cove.
And giving it to ECHO.
What we can do is bring, if we need to correct it, we'll do, do so for the, at your next meeting.
Good.
That's the plan, and unless there's a stumbling block, we'll make the correction.
Pave in D4, Gemini Springs, 400,000.
Well, you're saying that it needs it, so I don't know. Yeah.
We're, a lot of.
Who can speak on that?
A lot of these infrastructure things, were these things that are already on the forwarding list, like for the county to be doing? And, or are these just totally new, out-of-the-air projects?
We both could do that. These three projects came from our Parks and Recreation Department. They're not, they're not in our five-year capital. And it was under the theory that these are areas that if you paved, you would not be constantly having to maintain because they're sand or other surfaces that have a high maintenance or drainage issue. So it would hopefully create less maintenance demands in the future. That's the theory behind these three. I don't have that in my head, and I don't see Mr. Bailey here, so unfortunately, I don't.
You know, for, for me, I'll just, I'll say, I'm hoping that this money could be used for things that we already have on a list that we're going to have to spend general fund money for, that we could save the taxpayers some money by using these funds. And this sounds like a, I, I know they would be good, but it sounds like a, if money was, if money was no object, you know, let's.
We got to get rid of 10 million dollars, and that's, that's 600,000.
Four, five, and six?
Yep, four, five, and six, 700,000, yeah.
You're irritable.
He's getting hangry.
Your wife can hardly wait. Okay, D7, Park and Trail License Plate Readers.
I think that's a no-brainer. That should be a given. That's so important in, in law enforcement. So important.
There's been a major issue down in those parks. We think we're breaking in. I think we need to break up if we can.
Yeah, we agree.
Be that one.
Okay, we'll see where we end up here. Ag, Ag Center, I know George, these are the improvements first.
Yeah, I mentioned D9. D8 are a series of smaller improvements that they had.
It really, it, it needs it, and we're using the Ag Center for emergencies.
Well, that's part of what we looked at, I'll be honest, is we did. We, we've used that facility extensively during this pandemic, so.
I say we leave that on.
I think it would really help them out. Where I was focused was the land acquisition. Not to say that they couldn't use that, but because there's not a plan yet for its use, I was just putting it off.
My, my.
What, what did you say? Put your mic on.
Ag land buying the.
Because I know they're having problems with those roads and access in there.
I said, can we push that off to ECHO or wherever?
Yes, I don't know about ECHO for sure, but I'm just saying, I think that we can, that could be something we look at the general fund later on. But I think by now, with lack of an actual plan, and we don't even know if it would be 1.5 million. So it's just, I would take it off and we'll come.
Here's my concern with that. We're, we're going to need the land eventually, I think, that, that fairgrounds is going to grow. We won't know if that's available later on, and it's not. it's not going to be any cheaper. I just don't want to put it, put off of the list for, forever.
Well, we'll see what we end up with here, and maybe something can come back on.
Is D-8 still on, or did we?
Yes, it's on.
Okay.
D-8's on. D-9's a question mark. D-10, sheriff's emergency vehicle, we did that.
We reduced to five?
To five.
To 5 million. Domestic violence programs, that's a keeper.
That's a given, I think. Yep, absolutely.
Laonia Preserve Educational Center.
Please, you've already cut several things on the west side. I'd like to hang onto that.
Okay, we kept 11, 12, 13, public records software.
I think that would be a good one for the transparency and accountability.
It is. Also, well, we have, it takes a lot of time when we get public records requests. A lot of redacting has to be done, and my understanding, the software would help automate that process, which could save a lot of time.
Let's leave it. We get, we get a lot of requests.
Any computer things to move us into 2022?
That's been a real eye-opener for me. How many?
How many of those have we got?
Learning management system.
What is it?
So tell us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to have Dana Page Bender come up for a second.
Oh, HR training?
Yes.
So it is a training system, part of our issues during COVID. We're training pretty much came to a halt because we couldn't put people in a room to do training. We're trying to do some of that now, but it's a learning management system that allow us to have some blended runs and virtuals. So we're able to continue training regardless of what's happening. It also tracks the training, so it really is an investment in our, in our employees and helping to grow them and take them to the next level in a number of different areas.
I say we keep it, yes.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a number. Training. What about training?
If you come up and speak, you get to keep your item. Parking garage dampening repairs.
I'm going to leave that in there.
Whatever that is. I don't like the sound of it.
That's, that's a lot of money, but it's, it's, that's something we can't...
These are structural repairs. We, the council's already approved, and we have a plan for fixing the top floor of the parking garage, and this will be in the intermediate floors, further repairs that will be needed. Yeah, floors three, four, and five.
Okay, we'll leave that. Who can speak to D-16? From staff?
Here he comes.
I was going to tell you, don't break the record.
Department of Labor Corrections Director, yeah, so I, since I'm up here, any questions? You know, I just...
How, how much did you pad? That's my question.
Well, so let me tell you a little bit, because really, we're dealing with two major issues here in regards to this. Two totally separate projects, two totally separate needs. Pre-COVID, we talked about the number of mental health inmates that we deal with on a daily basis, and we talked about our detoxification needs. So these two mental health dorms that we categorize as mental health, we've categorized the detoxification of those inmates with the mental health folks. But this current, where they're at currently is in a single cell that does not have direct supervision. We're relying on inmate companions to help us keep an eye on these folks detoxing, because they're in individual cells. There are 16 cells per block, and I've got four blocks in a housing unit. One of these dorms will take the capacity of that entire housing unit. And right now, with the mental health, there are five officers 24 hours a day that deal, well, five in day shift, four at nights, that deal with just the mental health piece, not the detoxification. So by going out to these mental health dorms, one, the biggest advantage is that now they're under 24-hour surveillance in an open bay setting. Now, I'm still going to have some mental health folks that are uncontrollable when they come to us, so we have to keep them in a, in a single cell until we get them, you know, manageable, okay? So don't think that these mental health dorms, if you, if you bless off on it, it's going to totally fix our needs, but it is going to be one heck of a step in the right direction. And I'll be able to use the staffing currently to staff those dorms. So it won't increase my manning at all. Two dorms. And we already have two dorms, or four dorms actually, over at the correctional facility. We already have the plans and everything, so it's really two of those. And they're split in the middle. So you've really got four uses out of those two dorms. So I could, I could, if I had to, we also have another dorm that's already been approved, so we're going to be using it for the same kind of reasons, but for the ladies, they all stay over at the correctional facility. But I could put my mental health and my detox females there versus where they're at. And, and when you look at this construction of these jails, direct supervision wasn't even thought about back then. You know, an officer would go in and check and whatnot. Direct supervision is where you've got a human being, an officer in there with those inmates 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365. And in most cases, they see, they see the fire building before it's too late, so they get a chance to intercept it and, you know, keep those things calm.
We're not going to leave that alone.
So, so those are very, very, very important.
What is the cost when you get the, the state prisoners out?
Yeah, but we've also been before where federal judges weighed in on us, then you have no choice.
What is the cost of a dorm? Like, you're constructing it, correct, where you were?
No, it's going to be new construction, but if, if you agree that the 10 million, it's only going, because we've already got some there. I think it's about 9 million actually to finish that project. We've got 10 in there in case there are additional costs that we're not planning for right now.
Well, that was a question, how much fat did you put in it?
Are you giving us a million?
No, sir, I'm not.
Have we looked at, is there anything that we can use, use that's existing and transition those?
Use your microphone. I'm trying to get it online.
Sorry. Is there anything that we can use that's existing to accomplish this and then transition into a soft structure like those FEMA-style tents and whatnot for?
We don't have anything at the Branch Jail that can be used for the needs that we have right now. The Branch Jail's got about 1,000 inmates in it, and about 75 to 80% of those folks have not yet been found guilty of any crime. They're innocent until proven guilty. But the ones that we are, are dealing with over there are those ones that are arrested, coming off the street, highly intoxicated on something. Our mental health are off the chain over there because there's nowhere else to put them. So they end up, you know, getting picked up for trespassing or petty theft or whatnot. They come to us, and then we have to, it's a very dim cycle, because we'll get them, we'll clean them up, we'll stabilize them, we'll get them on their meds, then they get out, they go back out to their homeless shelters or whatever, and then they stop taking their meds, then they reoffend, then they come back to us, and it's just, it's a repeat, repeat circle. So what we're trying to do is take these mental health dorms that we want to build at the Branch Jail, and that's going to assist us with those needs that we have at the Branch Jail. Over at the facility, we've got a dorm that's already, the wheels are already turning on that one, and that's going to help us. We're going to have a total of five dorms at the correctional facility. But when you look at a direct supervision model versus what it was back in the 70s and 80s, it's going to help us staffing-wise over time as well by, by trying to get the entire thing under that direct supervision model.
My, my whole approach to this is, with these hard structures comes a lot of maintenance. And when we're still down, you know, correction, correctional staff or, or officers, can we appropriate some of this money towards that and getting more people here, more officers here to relieve that, that constant, whether it's through, you know, overtime burden?
Thousand-dollar bonus?
But, but this is, this is just it. It's looking for other ways, because the maintenance on these things is going to be tremendous. And when does it stop? You know, I don't know what the right answer is, but I know you guys need some help.
Well, so, so I'll address a couple of your concerns, because the jails right now are 37 and 47 years old, or 30, I may have the numbers backwards, but it's over 40 years old at the Bran, I mean, at the facility, and over 30. So everything, every day, you know, I joke with my maintenance guys, that you have your roll of duct tape and baling wire, you know? And all honesty, that's where it is some days. I mean, we've had water breaks. Yes, sir.
Yeah, just let me get, maintenance is definitely an issue, the age, but also, I think one thing he talked about, that the biggest issue we have is, is people, getting, getting and retaining people, and, you know, those ongoing personnel costs. This model he's trying to go to will save our labor costs in the long run and provide a better situation for them to work. So that's part of it. Again, I'm, and again, we talked about this originally, like, this is a case where you got one-time money and one-time thing here that hopefully, I believe, will def, will drive our long-term costs down. And that's the kind of investment you want to make.
I think this is one we need to keep.
It was identified years ago, too, as one of the weaknesses of our jail, when we had our expert come in on mental health issues and suicides, and this was something that had been suggested years ago, and finally, we've done about every other thing that we could do. This is a, kind of the final big step. Now, this will definitely take us into the next century. Now, I want to talk about project number two. So before COVID, really, staff infections was what we, as a corrections profession, really worried about more so than anything. So staff infections was what our contagious plan was all designed for. And realistically, we, we had gone through that about two months before this COVID bug came to the United States. So we were ready for it, we thought. But what happened is, when we had 268 inmates in our custody that were always symptomatic, when the first strain came through, our jaws hit the ground because we went about six or seven months, and we didn't have any positives. So we thought. And then we tested everybody in custody and found out that we had, I think it was 238. They were just, they just weren't showing the symptoms. They were working in our kitchens and our hallways, cleaning showers. I mean, and really, we had to lift and shift at that point. Where we were the weakest at, though, is we had no real place for our medical inmates to be in quarantine-type status. So we had to shut down our housing units. We had to equip our staff that were going into the housing units with all the, the PPE that we, I, I'm happy to say, though, that we not, we did not lose one officer, and I'm still knocking on wood because it's still out there. And we lost three inmates to COVID, but they had come into custody or been in custody like six or eight hours and got six. So we, we are 100% sure that they, two of them came in with it, and the third one, obviously, we didn't know that she had COVID until the ME's office, because we tested her negative, Halifax tested her negative, ME's office found it. So what this project is, and right now, it's just a grassy, open, old recreation area where they used to go play basketball. It's got 42 individual cells down there. What we're wanting to do is reconvert our medical unit that we currently have in the center of the jail and take that down to an isolated section of the jail where we can put everybody in relation to medical needs, and it's all by itself. It's isolated right now. So we, we would have the, the 42 single-cell beds that we have now, plus an open bay, and we're going to try to build up as time goes and needs are, you know, met. So that's really what that other 14,000 or thereabouts is.
We've, we've talked before about the aging infrastructure, and we've, we've looked ahead and said that, you know, at some point in the future, we are definitely going to need a new jail. So will, these two, we're, I'm assuming you're building those in to where those will be part of that new jail system?
We have that capability, yes, ma'am, based on the, the footage and the footprint that we have out there, yes. And, and even if they decided at another location, we're building it, attaching it to the jail, but we're going to be able to use it in the future for some other things. So even if, when we get those two buildings built, it's going to restructure some of the internal of the jail where I won't have to put inmates in it or staff it. We'll be able to use it for other things, warehousing, you know, things of that nature, so.
Gotcha. Approve, approve.
So this is part of your $10 million?
No, sir, that's separate.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute.
It's not on the list. So that's why I wanted to add some clarification. Mark in Corrections put in roughly, I, I want to say 20 million worth of projects or, or maybe more than that. And so this categorical allocation of 10 million gets him about half of his needs through the ARCA fund, and we'll have to work towards finding funding for some of the other modifications. Right now, it looks like the dorms may take priority, and the medical center will be up for our capital improvement discussion with council as part of upcoming budget sessions.
Yeah, definitely, the dorms would be the priority for us, for sure. Have the most impact now.
Okay, so we're keeping the 10 million, it looks like. There's 17 CIC call center capability.
That's a no-brainer, right?
Pardon me?
That's a no-brainer, right? I think.
Yes.
Okay. No difference, D-18 internet redundancy for the EOC.
Same thing, getting us to 2020. Yep. 20, yeah, literally getting us to 2020. Yeah.
Brian Whiting is here if you need further information, but basically, this is looking to add additional methods for internet connectivity to the EOC, so that in the event one of our communication methods goes down, the EOC would still have internet access.
Does it upgrade group one?
We said we're good with D-19, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're keeping D-19, beach renourishment, D-20? You don't live on the beach.
Our, one recommendation would be, Mr. Chair, to reduce it in half to 750,000. We believe FDEP will co-fund it at that half mark. This makes, then, with this study complete, we'll make the county eligible for state funds for sand nourishment in the future. Right now, we're not eligible for a lot of state funding that are going to other coastal communities because we lack this study, so that's about as...
And we've also, just, it's a $3 million project total. The Army Corps is chipping in at one and a half. Council has already approved an agenda item that sent a letter of support for this, and so we feel the 750,000, we can partner with the state to get the other 750. So it's really a, we're only paying a quarter of a $3 million budget. And it makes it eligible for beach renourishment in the future.
Okay, so we have that, and, and then we, we scratched D-21?
No, we didn't.
That was an awareness drill for the town.
What we were just talking about is, what we could look at doing here, similar to what we did on the landfill project, we could look at taking that down and just funding the, basically, the design of the project, which would be about 2.5 million. So take 5 million off of that. That gives us, and then we can go on out, if we have a design, we can go hunting for DLT funding.
I just find it, we're, we're desperately hunting for money for roads and widening and all that sort of thing. I sure hate to pass up something that we didn't anticipate having.
We're still quite a ways away from getting balance, so...
Yeah, where are we, Ryan? Are you, have you kept?
As you have up on the screen, with Williamson Boulevard still being going there, you wrote a $7.6 million deficit. 7,663,900.
And then we could... We're still, we're still short, but then we could look at the dampening project. We have...
We have, we could take, I think, money from, where's Tim? Because he's, yeah, yeah. We could fund, we can fund, fund it from the Ocean Center. He's just going to throw himself on the grenade here.
Tim, at Ocean Center. Actually, I told Ms. Conchin, I think just last week, our business is coming back fairly strong, few components still not there. Parking revenues last year were one and a half million, this calendar year two-point-six million. So parking revenues have recovered pretty well, which, you know, part of this funding can come from parking revenues. And also Ocean Center's already loaned the money from lodging tax to start this project for deck six. And so in the list of things that's, you know, super critical, we'll get it done between Ocean Center and the parking garage with lodging tax and parking revenues. And I, I really see parking, we've been operating, that garage revenue didn't quite double, but that's without deck six for over nine months now that we didn't have it in inventory, three-hundred spaces. So we get the deck repaired, you'll be adding those spaces back into inventory, which we sell. So the revenue should only climb. So I think if, I want some extra credit for falling on a sword. But you know, that's one that you will not severely impact the operation of either the garage or Ocean Center if you decide to let it be self-funded through the garage and Ocean Center and take it off of ARPA.
Okay, I'm, I'm for that. And that was really falling on the sword because you know how I feel about the Ocean Center. And I will remember that, but I'm okay with that. I think that's.
You have to go.
So now we're getting down there. So taking that twenty-four-hundred.
Okay, so now we're at five million something?
Well.
Wait a minute, I can't hear, we got a council member trying to speak. Danny? So do you want to make this public?
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. What's the question?
We can be balanced if we go from two-point-five on the Williamson to the remain two-point-two-three-six, you're balanced.
We can't squeeze in that five, can we squeeze in that five thousand for Derbyshire Place? It's five thousand dollars to, to create, to have a, you know, three-to-one impact in the community? You can't, we can't spend five thousand out of one-hundred-and-seven million?
What, what did you just do with Williamson? What I did with Williamson? If you had two-point-five, actually what I did was I took the project completely off, saw what the surplus was and plugged the surplus into Williamson. That was how the math worked out. That number ends up being two-million-two-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-one-hundred. So what are we, what are we setting aside for Williamson? Two-million-two-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-one-hundred.
Is Brian still here?
Down from seven-five.
I'm wondering, so I'm wondering if maybe we can do the, the internet stuff for like one-twenty. And then do Derbyshire for five.
Yes.
And then do Derbyshire for five. It's five thousand dollars, three-to-one in the community. I mean, it's, it's hardly anything.
I'm not worried about five, we'll find the five thousand in one thing or another. The only, but unfortunately Dr. Lowry just jumped out, but the La Union, the other thing about that is, is I don't know what exactly it all entails, but it could also be an echo project as well. So you got some flexibility with that, ninety-five thousand, I believe. Well, let's leave it on, but we'll, we'll explore the echo possibility because you're, you know, you've tied thirty-five million dollars on the projects here. You know, we, with no reserve or anything on this, on this list, so it's going to be tight, however it goes down.
I just did. I do want to mention.
Couple of these are padded though, so, right?
Yeah, and let me just say, you're actually still not quite there because one other thing I got to mention. All right, well, we've, we've put everything in there that the sheriff asked for on the assessment center, but it does leave the SMA portion that is not factored in there. And over the period of time they were talking, it was like two-point-one million dollars. So we could start off, as they said, truly is a seat money and put in one year, but you're, they're going to be coming for the remainder after that. So remember they were going to give a couple of positions, but also they were adding four, four positions, I think? Yeah, so we're not quite there if we.
Can you take what we've given so far and kind of bring it back and let us know where we stand or where?
Yeah, we can do that.
Where possibilities, where we could.
Yeah, as I said, this list here, you know, is not as critical having, we've done tremendous work tonight. But this, these are some long-term things. So I would say we're very, very close. We could leave it and then we can come back and figure out the SMA portion of that.
There's also seven-point-five on the, the A and B side, and I understand we can't spend that on the, the opposite projects. I totally get that, but that is sitting there in the general fund to be spent, it, or that it's sitting there to be spent on various things that I'm sure we could.
Yes.
Things that we would be spending money on later that we could sort of play that shell game and take care of SMA at some point.
Well, I'm thinking exactly, you got, you've got, you've got some amount of health stuff while he's.
Well, what I.
And also got opioid dummy possibly that can factor in or not.
I believe when the S, from what I've heard so far, it appears that the SMA and the Halifax Health request would be eligible mental health funding. So for the first two years of the four-year period, you could add it to the first list. So then you'd be questioned with how do you fund it in calendar year twenty-five and twenty-six? That's what would be potential for this list.
I think that's a question for them later, maybe.
If, if you were okay with just adding two years of, or funding through twenty-twenty-four, depending on how long the construction is to the first list, we could add it to the first list.
I'm in agreement with that because that's literally what the ARPA funds are through and that's what they're trying to get it off of. So I'm totally good with that. Let's.
We've done good.
Looks like you're ready to do it.
This was like Christmas.
Huge question before we leave. So we've had quite a few, we had another, we had an ARPA workshop before, we've, you know, it's now into the next year, we're still talking about ARPA. You're now bringing this back to us. When are we looking at having this definitive? We've, we've said now and I think given very direct directions, so hopefully there's not going to be a whole lot more discussion on it. So I don't want to have twelve more meetings on ARPA is what I'm saying. Yeah, no, I know we're not, but when are we looking at definitive?
Yeah, yeah.
Given the all okay?
We're going to bring this back for an official vote during the next council meeting.
Excellent.
We have to, like I said before, we absolutely have to for A and C. And you did great, we did a great job here tonight. So we'll, I think, try to put it all on there or if we have any question, that'll be discussed as an item. We don't need a workshop anymore. You're down to where we can make it official. Okay. Great job.
Are we ready to adjourn?
Really well together.
Yes, thank you, Ryan, for everything you put into with staff, everybody that put this on. Thank you for the.
Just want to be home.
We're adjourned.